In order, again, this is our second budget hearing. Always a pleasure to see you, Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the public, thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it very much. If you call the roll, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Here.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here, I'll stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, before we get started, some housekeeping that has to be done in the statement, millage, final millage resolution, but for the record, in accordance with Florida statute 200.065, subsection 2E1, and I'm sure that I didn't say that right, Keith, so for that I apologize, but you know what I'm talking about, "The first substantive issue discussed shall be the percentage increase in millage over the rollback rate and the specific reasons for the proposed increase over the rollback rate. For fiscal year 2013-2014, the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, is considering a levy of 3.9404 mils, which is a 3.66 percent increase of the rollback rate of 3.8012. This increase primarily results from contractual increases in both police and fire, public safety costs, an increase in legal fees to address historic lawsuit defense levels, and the funding of multiple program modifications in the capital improvement projects. After numerous council discussions, advisory board meetings, and a budget workshop, the revised tentative budget totals $12,505,058. This includes a general fund budget totaling $9,184,140, a capital projects fund budget totaling $748,039, special revenue funds budget comprising of the transportation fund totaling $547,472, and the volunteer fire fund totaling $265,000. A debt service fund budget totaling $734,609, and finally, an enterprise fund comprising the solid waste and recycling utility budget totaling $1,025,798. Establishment of both the final millage rate and the final budget require two public hearings each. The first hearings were held on Thursday, September 12, 2013, at 6:00 PM, and the second and final hearings are taking place tonight. With that being said, turn it over to you, Wendy, for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor, and very briefly. There we go, sorry. Tonight, very briefly, this completes the budget process which started back in March. For this evening, we have a two-part presentation, and we'll stop in the middle and then complete. We have, there are two actions for the council to take. One is the adoption of the final millage rate, and the second action will be the adoption of the budget. And obviously, we need to have this in place coming into the new fiscal year, which starts October 1st, and before I turn it over to Marty, I just want to thank you all again for your cooperation, assistance, and guidance throughout this process.
Thank you, Andy. Marty?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and the residents of Southwest Ranches. Tonight, we're in our fourth and final stage, the final millage adoption and the final budget adoption. I have a quick PowerPoint that covers two areas. The first one, of course, is our millage. Our first slide represents our direct and overlapping property tax rate. As you can see from the slide, of the total taxes bill that you receive from Broward County, our direct rate pertaining to Southwest Ranches is 21.22 percent, with the tentative proposed millage of 3.9404. There are other assessments that are not millage-based that are also on your bill. That includes your South Broward Drainage District or the South, Central Broward Water Management District assessments. The next slide is our eagle. Our eagle showing consistency, a four-year historical trend, and the tentative rate of 3.9404, almost practically a straight line and flat. Our ranking, we have still maintained our top-five ranking within the proposed operating millage rate for Southwest Ranches at the 3.9404 of the total 31 municipalities in all of Broward County. The last slide basically goes over our tentatively adopted changes that were incorporated from our September 12 hearing, which includes an $18,000 expenditure allocation that will cover our resident survey and strategic planning, our Rolling Oaks Park and Barn increased maintenance, and a traffic study, which would be transferred over to the transportation fund and handled through the transportation fund. However, we are still left, in the next slide, with not funded capital improvement projects. I'm not going to go and list each one individually, however, you can see here that we still have in our five-year plan of capital improvement projects of not funding available, no funding available, of over $1 million, $1,327,525. With that final slide, I'm ready to turn it over to council.
Marty? Having a problem here. Marty, thank you. Mayor, that completes the first presentation that staff had for you on the millage rate. This would be certainly the appropriate time to read that item into the record.
Thank you, Andy. Item number six, for the record, Erica, please, again, this is adopting our final millage rate.
A resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving and adopting the final millage rate for taxation of real property lying within the boundaries of the town of Southwest Ranches for the 2013-2014 fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica, appreciate it, council.
Can I jump in here, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Gentlemen, at our last meeting, as you know, I proposed a lower millage rate and did not, it failed. I took that upon myself as I didn't supply enough information, and it was my fault. I went back to the drawing board, got more data with Andy and Marty's approval, and they collated the data for me, and I think you were emailed or received some memorandums today about that, and I'd like to bring some of that forward. If nothing else, it at least clarifies some of the questions that were asked at the last time, and if I could go over them with you, just briefly, if you'll indulge me. The first thing, there was a question that came out about the reserves. Our fund balance reserves is 2.494 million. It's about $2.5 million in round numbers. That gives us roughly about a 30 percent margin of our budget, which is well above the established norm of 16 to 18 percent. So, we're in really good shape, in financial shape, in terms of the fund balance. And I know that was a question that came up, that everybody was kind of hazy on where it was at. On further research, one of the things that I had looked into was I knew that we had some unassigned funds that were going to roll over into the next year that were not part of the 2014 budget, that were part of the 2013 budget. So, I asked Andy and Marty to collate that and come up with a number that they were comfortable with that's going to transfer over. Well, we did all of that, and we came up with $345,000 that are going to be rolled over and unassigned, and the savings breakdown you see with the BSO budget, the ad valorem taxes, the general fund anticipated resource recovery, the utility propane tax, and the in-house engineering fees. So, based on that, I'm asking to lower the millage rate down to 3.90. I'm not giving up, I'm giving it one last shot. I'm asking for $43,000 of that to give back to the residents, to our customers, for lack of a better way of saying it. I think that it would show a sign of good faith on our part. That still leaves us with enough funds. I know we're all anticipating some public safety issues coming up. I still think that's a comfortable area. I've discussed it with Marty and Andy, and they are both comfortable with it. And having said that, and I said I'd be brief, you also see a little chart that shows the 3.9404 and the 3.90, the difference. You know, as it stands right now, we're giving our residents a tax increase. It's $35 per $250,000, and you go in multiples of that, it's up to $100. I'd like to lessen that a little bit to $25 at the 3.90 number. We're still giving them a tax increase, it's just not as severe, and that's kind of the vein, the venue that I think we need to approach. When we can make cuts, we should be able to take them, and by not hurting ourselves. So, having said that, I'll make a motion that we change the millage to 3.90, if I get a second grade. If I'm not, we've clarified some stuff here, so.
I'll second for discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, got a motion and a second for discussion. At this time, I suspect we should turn it over to the public and get some feedback from them. Again, this is a motion to reduce the millage rate to 3.90, and as Councilmember Jablonski said and confirmed the reasons why, along with the homework that he did. So, any members of the public wish to comment on?
Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. I'm against it, against what Mr. Jablonski is saying, for the simple reason, and I can give you two projects that you have said you would do and you have not put funding for for many years. One being the drainage projects, which was a three-phase situation, and you did the first phase. Phase two and three you have not done, and is a project that is very necessary on 195th, 196th, and it drains a very large section of our town. The second one is right out front. When this town hall was converted, the lighting out front is illegal, according to our code. I agreed not to fight it at the time, because it would be done under maintenance in the next year, changing the lights to the proper lighting. When you fly across Southwest Ranches at night in an airplane, you go, oh, there's town hall, I must be home. Now, I make a right to go to Perry Airport, because it is that bright. We have a dark sky ordinance, yet all of those lights out there, for several years now, are still illegal. How can we tell homeowners and community facilities that they have to change their lighting and come under our code if we, as a town and a municipality, do not? This is a problem. And the second one is you do not fund, and you have not funded this budget either, the projects on 195th and 196th, which are very necessary. So, I do not see where giving a break for anybody, including myself, and it's a minor, miniscule break, is going to help unless you fund these projects, and I ask you to fund them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Newell. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this motion, this item? See no public, more public comment, public comment is now closed. Turn it over to you all for final deliberations and direction. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I appreciate your diligence and seriously, the work that I know you've put into this, and also, I appreciate that I know that it comes from a strong dedication of doing what you feel is right and best for the residents of our town, and I mean that absolutely sincerely and seriously, and I appreciate the effort you went into it. I can't support it, and I want to explain why. We established last time we were together, and if it's changed, I would like to know about it, but we established last time we were together that, in fact, by doing this, our expenses will exceed our revenue for next year. And so, I cannot support something where we would put ourselves in a position where we're basically overspending our budget. Aside from that, there, we do have a large series of capital projects, and the only way we can accomplish those projects is to be able to accumulate those reserves, which are healthy, you are absolutely right, they are healthy, but the only way we can do those things, because our revenue is limited, is to accumulate for a few years and spend it, not to hoard it, because it's the residents' money, and you've made that point, and you're absolutely true, but to build it up so that we can do some of those projects. You know, we've got $1.3 million worth of projects there that have to get done, some of them have specific deadlines on it. And then, the last thing that concerns me about it is that we do have some very large unknowns for next year in the public service budget. And just for what we've budgeted, we would be overspending. If some of those contracts come in, where I fear they will come in, we would be way behind, and we may have to cut back on other projects and things that are budgeted just to make it work. So, I just don't think it's the prudent thing to do. I understand why you're doing it, and I think, I applaud your efforts to continue to remind us how important it is to give the residents every break they can. I feel that way, I think everybody does, but I applaud you for doing it, but for those reasons, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Yeah, I'm going to save a lot of time here, I'm just going to ditto what Vice Mayor Bright Cruz said and Mr. Hollingsworth. We do have some of the projects. We absolutely commend you and would be in the same boat you are if it weren't for the unknowns that we have out there and the pending projects that are not funded. So, yeah, that's the only reason I can't support it.
Freddie?
Yeah, you know, last time I was the one, I guess, made the statement you're referring to about, I don't believe that $2,494, $240,000 there since I've been here, and I'll challenge Marty, and he's done so much things with figures, that I'll come back and apologize everybody. Marty, if you can show me since 2000, how we accumulated $2 million surplus without it being part of the money we sold to Broward County for that school board property, that would be the only possible place to come, and I don't think it is, but somebody's got to show me, because I've been here for almost every budget, and I didn't see any surplus at the end of the year. When we got through, it was usually in the red, so it's hard for me to believe we accumulated $2.5 million running as close as we've been doing it. I appreciate what you're doing, Gary, and I know you're working on this as hard as I'm working on Fishing Hole, but I just can't, I can't support it, Gary, I apologize.
Go ahead, Gary.
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thanks, guys, for, you know, listening and the indulgence and collating the numbers, and I thought it was an interesting exercise.
Absolutely.
On top of everything else, just to get the data together, you know.
You gave us some very good information to contemplate, Gary, and it took a lot of time and effort and research, and I commend you for doing that, and appreciate it very, very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Erica, will you call the question, please?
Right, the motion is to reduce the millage rate to 3.90.
I'm sorry, 3.90, rollback, to reduce the millage rate to 3.90.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
No.
Councilmember McKay.
No.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz.
No.
Mayor Nelson.
After being involved in these negotiations recently, no, unfortunately. Okay, back to you all for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget at the 3.9404.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any questions, comments, and concerns from you all? Okay, turn it over to the public. Any members of public wish to comment on this item and this motion? See no public comment, public comment is now closed. See no further public comment, questions or concerns from this council? We have a motion and a second to approve the millage rate of 3.9404. Erica, call the question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bright Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, item number seven. This is a second reading.
Okay, thank you. We're moving to part two now involving our final budget public hearing. The first slide we're showing is where our funds come from, and this equals our advertisement. As you can see, our property taxes make up the largest portion with our fire assessment number two, and then our franchise utility taxes as number three. Our total general fund revenues and expenditures are balanced at $9,184,140. On the expenditures, we have two slides. The first one's by function, which also equals our advertisement. Fire rescue services is our number one at a little over $3 million, and law enforcement is a little over $2 million. Our third is our general governmental services, which includes our parks, our code, and all our general administrative expenses. Our third slide is a little breakout of the same $9,184,140, but that is by our object category, and as you can see, our operating items are the largest, because we're primarily a contract city, and that includes all our contracts, our vendors. Our second-largest category is what's indicated in yellow, which is our general fund transfers that go to our debt service, our capital projects, and our transportation fund. And in white, the one of the very smallest, is our personnel costs, a very low 12 percent. Moving into our general budget assumptions, the document that was presented is a summary document. It keeps our rates down while meeting our costs. No additional borrowing for funded program mods and/or capital projects, as listed in the book. We utilize conservative projections of both our revenues and expenses, and we are maintaining service levels while addressing council policies as well as priorities. Our highlights in regards to our program modifications, these are all funded, as you can see in red. We are planning an increase in maintenance and appearance at Fishing Hole Park. We funded increase in maintenance and appearance at Rolling Oaks Park and Barn. We're providing for the residential survey and strategic planning and a town-wide fire operational study. Additional program modifications include a traffic study for our Southwest 185th and two that leads into Southwest 190 Avenue. Our transportation surface and drainage ongoing rehab, our famous TIS-DORE program assessment study implementation. We are providing funding for our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that MPDES program implementation, and as well as a partial replacement of the town hall's air conditioning system. Our funded capital improvement projects, they're all listed there. I won't go through them individually, I did that with our last budget hearing, but as you can see on the bottom, they total a little over $900,000, $933,039. And now, at this time, we're at the final budget adoption, commission discussion, a public hearing, and the voting.
Thank you, Marty. Erica, would you read through the record, item number seven, this ordinance on second reading, please?
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the final budget of the town of Southwest Ranches for fiscal year 2013-2014, commencing October 1st, 2013, and ending September 30, 2014, providing for budget basis, providing for expenditure of funds, providing for carryover of funds, providing for notice, providing for severability, providing for conflict, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Council, to you all.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Newell?
I saved it for this instead of the other one, because it's the appropriate place. I ask this council to place into the budget a second phase of the 195th, 196th drainage project, which you delayed four years ago because of lack of funding and the collapse of the economy during the recession. We're at that point now, we can put it back in. It needs to go back in. You've already approved it by a 5-0 vote. Why aren't you going to do it? Now is the time to do it. Councilmember Jablonski has identified a couple of hundred thousand dollars excess. The second thing that needs to be put in is because I did not hold back this building getting a CO with a gentleman's agreement, and I hold this council responsible ultimately for the agreements made by the administration. Those lights out there are illegal. They need to be changed. Besides, I also hate orange lights, but that is not the main thing. The main thing is they are illegal under our dark sky ordinance. There is no way you can ethically or morally justify asking anyone in this town to comply with the dark sky ordinance while you are illegal yourself, and you are the ultimate body that takes care of this. The administration has it. Now, it is your turn. I ask for funding in this budget for those two items, which you are obligated to take care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Newell. Any other members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no further public comment, public comment is now closed. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Steve?
Yeah, Andy, I would like to follow up on those comments a little bit. One is, I guess, I do think they are both valid comments, and so, from a planning standpoint, I think we should know when those items will, you know, start to begin to address. I think for the lighting out front is probably the most critical of them all, because that really, we need to live by example, so I think that's extremely valid. For the other one, I think that we should start a discussion, if it's not already started, and I think it may have already been started, but start a discussion with South Broward Drainage District to see how we can partner with them on that project, because it's an ideal one for them. And once we do that and get a better idea of what our portion of it will be, then I think it would be appropriate time to make sure we can move forward with that.
Good comment, Steve, thank you. Any other, Doug?
I'd like to jump in and join you in that discussion or whatever, but I guess, I don't see a way to put it actually in the budget without us knowing a little bit more, meeting with South Broward, but I can tell you, Newell, that, you know, I agree with your comments and statements, and we can pursue and make modifications to this budget anytime we want along the way. So, I will tell you, we will diligently stay on top of, get with South Broward Drainage, and move forward in a diligent aspect, and what kind of participation we can get from South Broward in relation to that project, and how we have to divide it up with whatever money we have that we can throw at it. As far as the lighting in the parking lot, I can tell you that Andy and I have had quite a few discussions related to them. Me personally, I've been talking about putting LED lights out there, because they're more energy-efficient and whatnot. He's actually called and spoken with Weston, because they've done it to a lot of their lighting out there. So, we're definitely, that lighting issue has been on the discussion item for the last couple of months, so we're slowly, gradually pursuing it, and it will get fixed.
Mayor?
Thank you, Doug. Yes, Gary?
Thank you. I think we need to give Andy a general consensus that we need to put the drainage project at the top of the list out there. We did unanimously.
In high gear.
Say to do it a couple, a year or two ago. We need to put it back up there, and then we need to bring it back to here with a budget adjustment.
Agreed.
In other words, put some teeth in it. I don't think we should agree to anything tonight, based on what we don't know.
Right.
You know, I see that 100 percent, you know, but let's go find out, and then come back, and then address it. You know, I think that'd be the more prudent way to do it. And the lighting, I believe that would be a more of a maintenance thing, since the, well, not maintenance, but the poles are already up, the electricals run, it's a matter of changing out the heads, you know, on that, and I know that can be done at a fairly competitive price. I do it all the time in locations where I work with a different type of lighting. I do it all the time in locations where I work with a different type of lighting. Just one that can emphasize that. So I think we need to put that on the radar screen and go forward.
Very good, Gary. Thank you. Freddie?
I agree with what y'all said on that, and I'm not going to elaborate on it too much. I disagree with what you want to do there. But I kind of got a question for Marty. Marty, you know, I haven't said much about it, but I noticed it's not there. We usually have been set aside a hundred thousand dollars for road, and it's not there. My question is, I guess, is when we did the original sixteen roads, we borrowed eight hundred thousand dollars. And is that still pending? We haven't paid that off completely, have we?
Marty?
The road paving is within and budgeted of our transportation. It's a restricted fund. Give me a chance to open the page for a second. For next fiscal year, we have zero set aside for road paving. There has been complete utilization of the proceeds in prior years to cover our road paving for the proceeds we received. There's no more funds available. There is a hundred thousand set aside for drainage. We have thirty thousand for guardrails and forty thousand for striping and markers, with an emphasis on public safety, as well as the townwide entranceway signage of fifteen thousand. So you can be assured that the proceeds we received were utilized in past years for roadway paving.
That's not what I said, or else you misunderstood me. Of the eight hundred thousand we borrowed, how much of that loan is still outstanding? Because we were going to use that hundred thousand to pay that loan off originally.
Okay, I need to go to the debt service fund to tell you exactly. One second. Seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars. It's on page, I'm asking Peter, help me if you have a page number on the, one second.
109.
Thank you, Peter. Page 109 of the book. We have the whole disclosure. Oh, excuse me, I stand a little corrected. It's a little bit greater because that's 2015 and beyond is 728. So we have to add eighteen thousand, so it's approximately 700 and...
Eighteen thousand, ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand.
No, it's higher, I'm sorry. Ninety-six thousand. We have over eight hundred thousand still remaining to pay off on the debt.
And now we're paying it out of just the general fund and not out of the hundred thousand that we're setting aside for those payments.
Well, what's happening is we are funding our debt service fund through transfers from our general fund. That is correct. Every year, to meet our debt service covenants. So the debt is outstanding, but the money has been spent for all the roads.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns, council? See none. We have a motion and a second for approval. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fizikelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. That concludes our second budget hearing. I want to commend and congratulate Andy, your staff, and Peter, and Marty for doing such an outstanding job. This process has been ongoing for months and very fluid, a lot of information, a lot of different formatting, and we know the amount of time and effort and dedication that you put in to produce these documents. We thank you, Vice Mayor Council. Another great job, but difficult year. While we'll have some issues, needless to say, that we'll be confronted with, with some limited resources, we'll do the best that we can. And for that, I am thankful because I know how hard that you all work and the time and effort you put in, especially during budget time. So thank you for your efforts and your hard work and your dedication.
Thank you, Mayor.
With that being said, I'll certainly take a motion to adjourn. We do have a public hearing, or public meeting, sorry, our regular council meeting at seven o'clock. We can't start early because it's been noticed. So we'll adjourn this meeting and reconvene at seven. If I get a motion-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second to adjourn, and I'm sure that it is unanimous. This meeting is hereby adjourned. We will reconvene at seven for the regular meeting. Thank you. Order again, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Always a pleasure, staff. Good to see you. Members of the public, thank you so much for being here. Will you call the roll, please, Erica?
Councilmember Jablonsky. Councilmember Fizikelli.
Here.
Councilmember McKay.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here. We all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Item number three, a presentation, recycling update from Sun Bergeron. Andy?
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to introduce someone to you. You will certainly all remember, Ms. Lee Rickles, who's left the town, is now working with Sun Bergeron, and Brad Kane is with her here tonight.
Good to see you, Lee.
I know they have a-
Sounds to me like things are going well in your retirement. Congratulations.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. It's great to be here and see you all from this side of the podium. It's super. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and town administrator, and residents and friends. Thanks. I'm going to just take a moment to discuss recycling tonight. And this is so timely because I believe SWS is going to be delivering the large recycled totes to the residents in fairly short order. I think they're going to be delivered around October 3rd, and then, but within a week of that time, they'll be delivered to all the residents. They'll stage them from Rolling Oaks Park, and then they'll be disseminated to everyone. So I think it's kind of timely tonight that we talk about recycling. Well, recycling carts, as you know, will more than double the capacity of your current bin. And we can't stress enough the importance of recycling and the benefits for our environment. I think we all know that. Over here, you can see a display illustrating the yes and the no's of single-stream recycling. They're here at town hall for a while. We're going to leave them here tonight, and they'll be in the lobby so everyone can get an idea of really what you do put in recycling. Remember that since 2008, our residents have not had to sort garbage, or recycling, rather. You know, no sorting of aluminum glass, plastic. Everything goes in the same bin. However, I do have some guidance in respect to that. Once you get those big bins, and they look a lot like trash cans, unfortunately, some people think, okay, there's the bin, and I've got my hefty bag here with my garbage, and maybe just toss it in the top, on top of the recycling. Not a good thing to do, folks, because actually, recycling, as you know, and the cleaner the recycling is, is a commodity. It's being sold on the market, and the town receives money for that. So recycling not only makes sense that it's a good thing to do, but it makes a little sense for the town as well. And the cleaner the product that goes in that cart, the better we all do for the environment and for the bottom line. So I just want to remind you about that tonight. Anyway, plastic bags and styrofoam can't go in. I don't know if many of you ever thought about that, but that just jams up the process. The plastic bags, as they go through the very modern sorting machines, jam it up, and they slow everything down. So you take your plastic bags and your styrofoam generally to a market like Publix, where as you enter, there's those green baskets there and receptacles that say styrofoam only, plastic bags only, and that's where you put them. Also, I want to remind everyone that Southwest Ranches residents will soon enjoy their first household hazardous waste collection event here in the town. That'll be October 26th at the Rolling Oaks Park from 8:00 AM until 2:00. And I know that Sandy and Monita are doing a really good job of promoting this because I've seen it in the newsletters, and they'll be putting it out in media as well. But plan on cleaning things out. If you see a caution on any label in your garage of an old chemical or paint, that's a good indicator that that should not go down the drain or being poured into your yard. You're allowed up to four tires, automobile batteries, regular batteries, your old TV sets, your old computers. Clean it all out and bring it over that morning in the Rolling Oaks Park for the household hazardous waste event. And we have information over there about yes and no, what to recycle, and that will be here at town hall. And Sandy will be putting out more information on HHW as it gets closer. And that's it for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Lee.
Great, Lee, thank you. That's a lot of good information. We appreciate it very much.
Any questions?
County, Freddie?
Up to four tires. Four tires.
Four tires. They didn't pay the size.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Yes, sir.
Lee, how often will we have that recycled?
Well, your recycle is picked up weekly at your home.
No, I'm talking about like the one we're having-
The one you're doing.
Oh, the one at the household hazardous waste, four times.
Four times a year?
Yes.
Because, you know, I guess mostly y'all realize we're shut out of the one over here on-
That's right. This Saturday is the last one. The 28th is the last day.
It's going to be real important that we have those.
It'll be there.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Lee, thank you so much. We appreciate you being here and a lot of good information. Thank you very, very much. Okay. Next item is public comment. Erica?
The rules for a public comment are written on the agenda. I'll just state the names in the order that they were received. Tracy Stathen.
Next.
Mike Hanley.
Next.
Debbie Green, followed by Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Gay Chapels.
If there's any other carts, please submit them at this time.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th Avenue.
A little closer, we can't hear you, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. You can pick it up if you want.
As you know, I live right there at the gate at 199th Avenue. And it's been said to you, and I hope all of you listen and take to heart, and I understand this accident that happened, this horrendous accident, didn't, the woman didn't lose her life because of those gates. But the circumstances that put her in that position is absolutely because of those gates. And had that been, had that chase happened a couple hours earlier, anytime in there, that could have been my daughter on her way to West Broward. It could have been any number of our kids, every single child in Southwest Ranches and Pembroke Pines out that way, where all those gates are, that closes us off, every one of them. By Broward County School Board, is bounder to go to school south. At the time when these street closures first became an issue, we were bounder to go north to Cypress Bay and Falcon Cove. Then again, as it got revisited again, we just up there are going to just ignore the fact that our kids all head south. And the probability of one of our students or a parent taking their child to school, traveling south on US 27, and the probability of getting into a high-speed accident, traveling south on US 27 as opposed to traveling south on 196th Avenue, you increase that probability exponentially. And I understand the speed limit and all the hard work that went into changing speed limits to 45 miles per hour on US 27. And that's wonderful. But you know, at the same time, it gets enforced at the very beginning of school, when school starts again, you have all these big trucks going, now you're lucky, so instead of going 75, they go 60. But it's a, it's a huge, it's a big highway, a straight highway. If I chase something, or something like that's going to happen, that's where it's going to happen. As opposed to giving our kids the opportunity to drive down 196th Avenue to get to Pines Boulevard and go to school. Because otherwise, the only way for them to get to school is to go north to Griffin Road, east to 172nd Avenue, south to Pines Boulevard, back to 209th Avenue. You're forcing our kids and the parents on that road. And I just, you know, maybe one possibility is that you offer clickers to the residents that live between that 199th and 205. So they have access and have a safe way to get their kids to and from school, and their kids to get themselves to and from school. And one of the suggestions by Mayor Ordus that was in the paper was trying to urge you to, in the interim, open up the gate while they complete their road in six months to give access north to Griffin. But I understand that road is going to be closed to Southwest Ranches residents, is only going to have clickers for its Pembroke Pines residents. So maybe, you know, an option is to get, offer those clickers to all the residents, Southwest Ranches, Pembroke Pines alike, so we all have a safe way, and our kids have a safe way to get to and from school. And I really hope you take this to heart and really consider it, and it doesn't fall into F years again.
Thank you.
Noel Hollingsworth, followed by Gay Chapels, followed by Dee Schroder, followed by Manny Hagan.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Let's talk about the website tonight. It's a brand-new website, but it's not user-friendly. Let's take an example of tonight. You want to see what the agenda is for this council meeting. You go to the homepage, and then there's nowhere that says anything about the agenda and the coming meetings. So you have to go to departments. Well, I happen to know that our clerk is responsible for the agenda. So I look under departments, and there, when it comes up, I get to click a third time on the clerk's office. Then I get to click a fourth time for the agenda, which brings up the agendas. Then I get to click another time for the agenda itself. It is buried so deep that anyone that wants to find the agenda and does not know the website and how departments and everything work within the town will never find it. They will never find the ordinances, they won't find the resolutions, they won't find the conferency plan. None of that is available, beginning with the homepage. You have to start clicking on various different things. We need the homepage to tell us where things are. We need an index on the front page to say if you want to go to the agenda, you want to make an application for something. There is nowhere, right now, there are very generalized items, departments. Well, that's all the departments in the town, engineering, community services, finance, all of that is in departments. Nowhere is it user-friendly enough that we can go forward and find what we want quickly. The other thing is, which I have mentioned before, where's the rooster? That was, as some people in our town say, was one of the branding items on our town. Says we are farm animal friendly. The rooster is an integral part of our homepage. And as I was told, that it had died, and they had given it a decent burial. Ah, well, guess what? Take the $3 and buy another rooster. Put him back where he belongs, and let's hear him grow. Thank you.
I live at 5901 Southwest 160th Avenue. First of all, my deepest sympathies go to the family that have had such a terrible loss. Unfortunately, we have lost a lot of people in Southwest Ranches and surrounding areas on our Broward County roads out west. We had a woman, Nancy, back in 2007, a drunk driver hit her as she was turning in. We had no gates at 199th. She lived at 5121 Southwest 201 Terrace. I'm sure all of you will remember. She had a bunch of children that went to Cypress Bay and other, I think, the middle school as well. I think they numbered nine or something of that nature. There were a lot of children left motherless. We just had another one on I-75, 213, Jorge, Rojas. I can't begin to tell you how many. We had all those young people in the last two years die on I-75, I mean, on Griffin Road, actually before you get to I-75, either from curbs or drunk drivers- Road, actually before you get to I-75, either from curbs or drunk drivers or whatever. I talked to the police because I'm really frustrated with the news media. They seem to throw spins on everything, they don't give facts, they, they pick and run, it's like watching a bad movie. The police told me that there was a dump truck behind her, and she pulled out and the dump truck, of course, stopped or didn't move. Had the dump truck been first, and this is the old, when you're in the wrong place at the wrong time. I run 27 and have run 27 for the last 55, 60 years, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. I go to Okeechobee, I've had horse trailers pass me and roll over. I had, I was with Rad one night, we were coming back from the auction on 27, and two people were drag racing, they had their lights off, they almost killed us. But we caught them at the last minute. And it's an ongoing thing. The speed limit there is 45 miles an hour. This man was a killer. He had just murdered two people. He was driving at 110 miles an hour. There is a high school, West Broward, any one of those kids could have pulled out of that school for any reason and been killed. It just wasn't gonna happen then. It happened on Griffin. I have a lot of questions as to why they didn't stop this man on Chrome before he ever made it to 27. Why they didn't put a blockade up there? It's mud on both sides and two lanes, and there was no traffic. The other thing was, they had two choppers following him and the news media chopper, but no police were chasing him. This man was hell-bent on destruction. You can't avoid it, I don't care where you are. People are sitting in their homes and they're gunned down. A woman is sitting there with a child in broad daylight, two kids walk up to her, ask her for her money, she doesn't have any money, and they shoot her baby in the head, an 18-month-old baby. You know what they said? "We're bored." That was their answer. "We're bored." You're not safe anywhere. The gates had nothing to do with this. People that live behind those gates right now are enjoying a safety they never had before. I will say they did have it before, when the, when the roads were not through. But now, it's a safe area. People can go out there and they can have their kids play out there in safety. Dogs were killed, people's lives were in danger constantly. I, I'm really concerned about the fact that the news media does not tell the truth. They run on emotion. I feel terrible about this woman's death. But it's not the gates, folks, it's what's out there today. Thank you.
Dee Schroder, followed by Manny Hagan, and last speaker is Vince Valetta.
Dee Schroder, 5501 Thoroughbred Lane. Good evening, Council, Town Administrator, Town Attorney, Staff and Residents. I too have lost friends in the canals, asked for them to be closed. Being in the wrong place at the wrong time seems like it really is an issue. When you let your kids drive, you put 350 horses in their possession. You get in your car and you have 350 horsepower underneath you. It is your job to watch out for every person on that road, not that they should watch out for you. It's your responsibility. This was a horrible tragedy that should never have taken place. And let's put the blame, let's put the blame where the blame should go. That man was not stopped in Dade County, why? Dade County Police Officers, as far as I'm concerned, failed to do their job. Miramar, Pembroke Pines, the South Broward, the Broward County Police Department, and the Florida Highway Patrol cannot staff this man. One little lady gave her life, but she stopped him from hurting anybody else. In my book, she's a hero. They couldn't do it. And your taxpayers go, your tax dollars go so that they will provide us with protection and service. Do you really feel protected right now? Because I don't. Broward County School Board, let's talk about them. You wanna talk about a passion for kids? I ran against one of the members from the Broward County School Board, and do you wanna know why? Because they threw my kids out of a school they were entitled to go to. So you wanna blame somebody for this? Let's go after all those people sitting on the school board. Are you kidding? You wanna blame gates? You're gonna thank your lucky stars when that prison breaks ground and you're pummeled with traffic. Then you'll be up here kissing everybody's booty. Mayor Ortiz, he tells you something? Do you see him? Ortiz? I don't see Frank here. Is he here? Nah, nah, he sends other people to do his work. Let him show up. He wants a challenge, we'll give him a challenge. The empathy that these people are feeling, her family, you wanna blame it on something? It's not going to bring this woman back. Do we all not feel this? It is not the gates. Officers that knew this was happening, lack of communication, not doing the right thing, being kicked out of our schools. Let's put blame where blame should be. Don't pick on gates. If that's the best you can do, I feel really bad for you. It has nothing to do with a gate. Those gates are there and they protect people, and the people there are safe now, they were never safe before. They can walk out of their homes, their children can go out there, and their dogs can run across the street without being pummeled down. Remember, that prison is coming, and you are gonna be grateful for that. Thank you.
Manny Hagan?
Sir? Sir? Please? Thank you. Manny Hagan, 17901 Southwest 68 Court, Southwest Ranches. I live very close to Sheridan Street. I am less than half a mile from Sheridan Street. I have to go approximately five and a half miles to get to the same spot on Sheridan Street and 178th Avenue, but I like it that way because it protects us from speeders coming through from the north and speeders going up from the south. This was a horrific, horrific accident. I watched the whole thing on TV, and as I saw the car crossing on Griffin Road, I thought, please, don't let this happen, but it did. It was terrible, terrible, terrible. And I have feelings for the family and friends of this woman, and it was just an unfortunate, unfortunate thing that she was there at that time. We have six roads that go north and south from Flamingo all the way over to 27. I don't want any more roads going north and south. I want all those roads for our own protection. We are a rural town, we are a residential town, and to protect our residents, we have to do something about that and keep these things from happening. Thank you.
Vince Valetta?
Vince Valetta, P.O. Box 2915.
Can't hear you, Vince.
You can't hear me?
No, we can't.
That's unusual, that you can't. Anyway. I'll just answer, my address is on record. Mayor, Councilman, I wanna take this opportunity to wish a bond farewell to our Captain Linda Stock, since she is retiring, and for the short time that she was here, she did a magnificent job. I wish some of the previous commanders would have done as well. I want to thank Vice Mayor Brightcrude for taking the time and the effort for putting an article in our WAGLAR lambasting the FDOT. I wish that we take some of that energy and see if we can build some roads in our town. We got a right-of-way we've been talking about for 12 years and still haven't built that road on 184th. And I can understand some of the people feel that it's their property, but it's not. It's our town's property, and in order to alleviate traffic within our town, that would have, that road should have been rebuilt a long time ago. With respect to the, to the roads, I have some of my residents complaining that they're not getting their fair share as far as road maintenance is concerned. But I hope they're here tonight, but they were, they were at our meeting last night, but I didn't get an opportunity to speak. And last thing is drainage projects that we have for Sunshine Ranches. I hope we can find some funds in this coming budget in order to keep maintaining our improvements in Sunshine Ranches. And as far as what these people here are for, as far as a person being killed because they feel of some, some considerations because they can't drive through our town, well, you know, I just come recently, got to an accident on Pine Island, you know? Accidents do happen. And I, I don't, I don't, I don't see that there's any blame here on our Southwest Ranches. And again, I think our roads need to be improved, but the blame is, is, if you point the finger, you always gotta look at the other three that are looking at you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there were two speakers that weren't present at the time, I'd like to... Tracy Statham?
Good evening, Council. I'm Mayor Nelson, I've left you a few messages the past few days. First, I guess I just wanna say, a moment of silence for Maritza and what happened. I have to say, I have been a Pembroke Pines resident for 13 years, and this has been a feud that has been going on, but what I don't understand is, at the end of the day, it's a safety issue. You have children that are going, you know, you have Southwest Ranch, Southwest Ranches residents that are driving on 27, and we do also. And I guess, I really feel that this is a feud between the two cities, I know there's some vendettas that are going on, but what I don't understand is, the three roads that are affected, 199, 202, and 205, we've taken a poll, we've been out the past few days, and I would say, I'm, I'm gonna be on the safe side, I would say 85% of the people that are affected by these road closures don't want them. And it's you people east, it's Mary... It's, I, you know, I know you guys want your, your rural lifestyle and your horses come over on our side and make their little deposits, but at the end of the day, I don't think you're taking the polls for the people that are actually living out there, and it's not equal. And we want to do whatever we can do, we're gonna go to Senate levels, we're gonna go to other levels. This just shouldn't happen. And, and I, and I don't wanna say, I, I don't know, blocking the road, why can't we come to some agreement, whether it's clickers for everybody, passes that we can all get along? You know, I have three teenagers, I've said this before, I have three teenagers that are driving, and it scares the heck out of me that they're on US 27. And I think we all can relate to this, because when we saw what happened to Maritza, it could have been any one of us. So I'm just asking for you and the City of Pembroke Pines to get together and let's, let's work this out, let's have something. Heck, you can make some money on those gates that you paid $80,000 for.
Mike Hanley? He's the last speaker.
My name is Mike Hanley, I live on 50th Place off of 205 Avenue, Southwest Ranches. Council, Mr. Mayor, Andy, Counselor. I, I have been opposed to the gates from the get-go, you know that, I still am opposed to them. I just wanna suggest an alternate solution, perhaps. She discussed the clickers, I asked Councilman, I mean Attorney Polikoff previously about putting clickers in, and I was advised that if we offer them to our residents, we have to offer them to anybody. Maybe we could amend that proposal, let's put in some clickers or windshield sticker, or be even like Sunpass and put something on the windshield that would automatically open those gates and restrict it to the residents that live in Pembroke Pines and Southwest Ranches on the streets of the gate. And, and since you have to charge for the clickers or offer them to anybody else that asks for them, why don't we say, fine, you may have one, but for the residents, we're gonna give it to you at cost. For anybody else that asks for one, make it $2,000, $1,500, and use that money to maintain the gates and to keep them looking nice and whatever else you need the money for. Share it with the residents of Pembroke Pines, share it with the people of the Southwest Ranches, the two-city council. My second suggestion is, why don't, in lieu of the fact that this accident happened and people are going back and forth against the school district and people trying to get to work through those gates and cannot, why don't we put a timer on the gates, open them from, say, 7:30 in the morning till 9 o'clock when people are going to and fro, for the residents? Open them again at 3:30 to 5:30, for the residents, and close them after that. That might work. The third one I suggest is, why don't we pave 210 Terrace and perhaps extend Bonaventure Boulevard all the way through like it was planned? Those are my three proposals. I'll still be anti-gates, I live out there, and I was gonna say, Mr. Nelson, tear down that wall, just like Reagan said to Gorbachev. I'm done.
Okay, that concludes public comment, item number four, which is our board reports. Any members of our committees wish to speak at this time?
As you all know, Freddie has been out there working very diligently. You all voted on the boards to go around to hold back the debris for the shavings for the totlot, and I think you did all that work, didn't you, Freddie?
Me and a couple other people.
Yeah, I know, I went by twice and saw you, you notice I didn't stop by to help. Anyway, it's looking really good, they're moving ahead, they've got...
Hey, Gaye, I don't wanna interrupt you, 'cause we wanna hear, it's hard to hear you up here because people are recessing. Is it all right with you, Council, take like a two-minute recess and allow them to exit the chambers, and then we'll reconvene in two minutes? We wanna hear what you have to say as well, and anybody else?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Number four, board reports. So if we can have everybody that wants to stay, to stay, we ask you to please be quiet so we can conduct this meeting. Okay, thank you very much. Gaye, sorry for the interruption, but the floor...
Why don't you start over?
Yeah, start over.
Okay, I'll make it quick. The Parks Board is obviously working on the fishing hole, and Freddie's doing most of the work out there. They've got the sidewalks in. May have to kick Vince. They have the sidewalks in, and it's really beginning to shape up and, and look good. Hollingsworth in December, this is Hollingsworth, not the bad guy. They're working on, putting on another horse show this year, but they wanna make sure they're not gonna conflict with any of the big shows so that we can get a good turnout and have everybody participate. It'll be for 18 and under, and it still will be free, we're gonna give trophies and ribbons and so on. We're gonna give trophies and ribbons and so on. So we hope to have a big turnout, and if anybody shows horses, wanna come to this, please call December and let her know what the horse show dates are so that we don't conflict with them. I mean, we may not be able to accommodate everything, but usually they have the shows pretty much scheduled. The other thing is, we're gonna have a meeting October 8th out at the barn, and hopefully we'll have the Design Art Board and the Parks Board out there to take a look at some issues and address them before we get underway and put out the design build on it. So hopefully, we have several of the Design Art Board people that sit on the Parks Board, and we'll get the word out so that they can come. I would hope that the Council will show up, because we'd like to have your input also, as long as you agree with us. Thanks, bye.
As long as we agree.
Dee Shorter, I know I'm not an assigned board for the town, but I am the historical board and I am the chair, and I just wanted to let you all know that we haven't forgotten about it. We've had our first meeting, we've actually voted on something to get this rolling, and I'm hoping that somewhere maybe we can find some money in the budget to help us out. We have a lot of good ideas, and you're going to see these things come into fruition. I promise I'm not gonna drop the shoe and just walk away from this, but it's going to be a fun board, we have good people on it. I don't have all the dates with me right now when we'll be meeting again. Winita has that, it's all in the minutes, but I just did want yous to know that we are working on it, and you're gonna see part of history, what led up to the history of this town, and the actual conception of the town itself. Thank you.
Any other members of any boards wish to speak at this time? Okay, seeing no further comments, which is unusual, because we have a lot that certainly like to speak, and it's always a pleasure to hear from. That concludes item number four. Item number five, council member comments.
Gary.
Do you want to go?
Well, I didn't want to go first, but I would like to do something here. You know, I sit on MPO, so briefly I'm gonna tell you something real quick. The lady that's sitting next to me, she's from Cooper City, and she was telling me about coming out here every Saturday and working at a horse farm that was doing a lot of rehabbing. I took a, I got the address and I went by the other day, and I met the young lady, she's sitting right here in the front row, her and her husband and Gloria, and they're running a little place up there right off of Hollity. And I told her to come to the meeting tonight. I didn't realize what was happening tonight, and I was hoping that she could speak. Is there any way, Mayor, we could give her three minutes to talk now and before we get in?
I don't, does Council have any objections to that? We violate Roberts rules all the, all the time, but we're always, we, we, we violate it and, you know, as a result, and the reason, you know, to get comment and feedback from you all, and certainly we're gonna violate it again, so come on up and.
But it is.
Love to hear from you, and introduce yourself to all of us. Thank you for coming.
It is a council member's request.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Town Council, Town Attorney. I'm sorry. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Town Council, Town Attorney, Town Administrator. Very nice to see you all. I'm Roberta Sikora Seeger. My husband is Dr. Richard W. Seeger, and we have over here Gloria Crespo. She's our number two on our rescue ranch. I have been rescuing over 40 years of my life. My background includes, I come from the College of Vet Med, College of Medicine, University of Florida. I used to teach microneurosurgery for the neurosurgery department, Shan's Teaching Hospital. I was a published scientist, and my last appointment being College of Vet Med, College of Medicine allowed me to have a tremendous amount of exposure to everything imaginable in terms of dealing with animals. In my lifetime of rescuing for 40 years, we have rescued hundreds and hundreds of animals. Because I come from research, I always look out of the box to see how else can I make something work? How can I save their life? What else do I need to look at? Do we need to change ambient temperature? Do we need to change fluids? Do we need to change something they're eating? Do we need to change how they're being handled? So it's always been for me, a passion, and my husband and I have funded all of this work all of these years. We have three rescue ranches. Our first one is down in Okeechobee, in Miami-Dade County. We actually had to leave our own ranch because it was so unsafe. They were slaughtering horses right in front of our ranch. We actually had to move many of our animals that we had there and bring them up to our big rescue ranch in, in Wisconsin where we have 28 acres. We have a gorgeous facility where we have full-time caretaker staff, part-time caretaker staff, and we are state inspected by the State of Wisconsin. When the state inspector came to our ranch, he walked through, he didn't say a whole lot, and at the end, he came to my husband with a big smile, and he said, "It just doesn't get much better than this." So we really try to be an example. We work very hard in terms of what kind of formulas we come up with and develop. We actually, my husband and I drove a load of hay down from Wisconsin, took us 35 hours for the rescue horses we have here. In the last 20 months, we have taken in and rescued 16 horses, and we've been asked by Broward Sheriff to please assist with the huge demand that's going on. The majority of the horses that we have taken in don't even qualify as a one. Our Dr. Ashley, Dr. Natalie, our vets have come in and they said, "I don't know if you have hours, days, or a couple of weeks." Nobody says that to us anymore. We have not lost one horse. Some of the unique things that we have developed, we have found feedings and times and, and different, different supplements in Wisconsin that we have never, ever seen here. Wisconsin is very passionate about everything they do with animals, and they're very strict. Even the smallest farm with five chickens has to be state inspected. It's very unique up there, the way they run this. We actually bring down very special feeds, very special probiotics that are made up there, and it has been amazing for our horses. When I first started, it took me 15 months to get a thoroughbred turned around that came in and needed to gain 900 pounds, for which the vet didn't think he could make it. 15 months, he's in perfect condition. It now takes us about seven to eight months, maybe as many as nine, to get them to where they need to be. We've really come up with what we need to do, we're very specific, we do it a very specific way. No one's ever seen the kinds of things we do, and we've built up a volunteer organization now of over 30 people. So we have wonderful people from Southwest Ranches that are our volunteers. We have people from Cooper City that are coming, we have children coming, so we have, we have a bustling little place there on a, on a Saturday. It's owned, the area where we're renting, it's owned by Dr. Cohen and his wife. They appreciate that, from one doctor's family to another, that we were desperately in need. You all have been so wonderful to us. I walk into the office, you welcome me, you've helped me with permits, you've been there for us. I can't say enough wonderful things about your community. When we came, they were slaughtering in front of our ranch in, in Okeechobee, we had to get the horses out right then and there. There was no time left. So thank you for being such a tremendous community. I have nothing but praise for you and the kindness that we have received here. We want to continue to return that by doing really good work. We have a great Facebook page, you can go on and see the before and after pictures, it's pretty shocking. It's called Faithful, F-A-I-T-H-F-U-L with one L, Faithful Horse and A-N-D Animal Rescue. We're also gonna be posting pictures of our befores and afters of the ones that have gone up to Wisconsin, and we look forward to this wonderful relationship that has begun here with you all about 10, 11 months ago. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And God bless you, your husband, this wonderful organization, and these wonderful miraculous stories that you communicated to us with regards to some of these, these horses. Keep up the great work, and we're here to help. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary. Mine's gonna be long.
That's all right.
All right. Okay, I, I guess the first thing I want to say, you know, I gotta, I think Willie's here, but Willie broke some news to me yesterday, and I looked, I went and called a gentleman today, but, you know, one of our residents is here a lot is Bob Bush. I don't know how many people you know, but Bob's wife has been very ill. She's been in the hospital. I don't know all the facts and figures, but I talked to Bob about it today. She had some kind of a stomach operation, this thing turned bad. I don't know if she's been in intensive care for as long as she had, but I said something like six weeks. She's still there. I talked to Bob today. She's where she, because while she's there now, with, after all the infection, they found out she's got heart trouble, so now she's, when she walks, she, her heart rate goes up. But Bob says she's doing better, she's progressing, so just keep her in your prayers, people, that's all. Okay, the second thing is, I went to drainage meeting today, and they're, they had their budget meeting today, and I was the only one there. Bob and I are usually the only ones there, but anyway, everything went fine. They approved that sleeve that's going in on 188. The next thing, I guess, is the fishing hole park. As you say, I, I was there just about a month's time, and Willie can probably figure, I think they, Willie, did they get all the mulch in? Has all the mulch in yet? Yeah, okay. We've got the mulch in finally, and we're, we're getting there. It's looking great. Any of y'all gets a chance to get there. We've had some terrific problems with the drainage, but I think we've got them all worked out, and, and we finally got our border up, and that's a, a long story. I don't think y'all want to be, that, but I'll just briefly tell you. My wife tells me, I don't know how to say no, and I think that's the biggest problem, but when we, you know, we had to put that border up, and it wasn't part of the contract. So then we see, well, what can we do with it? So we finally got to the point, I said, "Look, if you give me two helpers, I'll do it." Well, let me tell you something, we need to make a list of volunteers. I know there are a lot out there, but then when you need them, how do you get in touch with them? So then I said, "Wait a minute, we do something different. If we, I'll hire two labors, and they'll do the work," and Willie and I were supervised. Well, that didn't work out too well, because I only ended up with one laborer, so Willie and I ended up being labors and supervisors. But we did get the border up, and they're putting the mulch in, and it's doing great. So any of y'all get a chance, that you get a chance to go out there and look at it. But the only thing I want to talk about, the last thing on the fishing hole park, is what we discussed at the last meeting during discussion about the trees. I know December's been out there marking trees. I took my, I got an old dozer, it runs, but that's all I can say about it. I cut a trail on the south end with my dozer, so she could get in a little bit more. But then, while I was working out there this week, something happened that kinda concerned me. The people were coming out there, start taking the trees out already, and I didn't think we were that far. And I talked to Andy about it, and he felt we were because we discussed it at discussion. But one thing, I want to make sure that I'm not against taking those trees out. I'll change my opinion, people, if y'all want to take them out, you want to take them out, and I'll support you any way you want to, but I just want a contract signed that what those people are gonna do. Because, you know, that fishing hole park is a good example of not having the proper paperwork and stuff that we needed into that place. Because where we're at right now, the troubles we had was because of some of those things. So all I'm asking for tonight is, those people can start tomorrow, they really, I, all I've seen that they've done so far is root for a couple of trees, which is fine. But I just don't want to have something happen where they go in there and start taking those trees out and find it's not profitable to them, or it's not for them, and then they walk away. I think we need to draw up a contract telling them what they need to do, and what if they don't do, what's gonna happen. That's all I want to say about the trees that y'all are doing.
Freddie, I got a question, if I can join in with you. If I can join in with your conversation here, since it is council member comments. I don't know how we can go in a contract when this is like a trade-off, there's no money exchanging hands or whatever else here, so we're kind of, and December's out there and talking with them and telling them what trees they can take, if I'm correct, December, is that right? Okay, so, you know, I, I think we have an understanding. And maybe Andy, you can clear this up for me.
But Doug, we, we, when we bought the fishing hole park, we bought that, you know, I don't want to go into all the histories of that park, but we signed a contract with people, you say no money for them, that contract, there was 13,000 trees in there at that present time. We signed a contract for that gentleman to take out, and correct me if I'm wrong, December, I think it was 3,000 trees he'd sell for himself, 3,000 trees he's gonna sell for the town, then he'd sell the rest for our profit. That thing has been a nightmare for December, it's been a nightmare for everybody, and we've been in court over two or three times, if I'm not mistaken, I know once or twice. I don't want it to happen again. Doug, there don't have to be money changing. You don't want somebody, let me tell you something, I was in the nursery business. I'm very surprised they're doing what they're doing, and if they do it, good, but I don't want them to go in there and pick out the best trees, which are easy to get out of there, and then they go to say, "Okay, I, I don't want anymore," and just leave it with a bunch of holes and.
Well, let me back up here. I, I believe, from what I understood with our conversation, that as the gentleman was taking trees out, he would be backfilling holes and, and clearing the way. I don't think he's just going in there plucking trees. And if I recall, we mentioned that we were gonna do it in a section to see how we end up or what it's gonna turn out to be, and if we're not happy, we weren't gonna continue. And if we were happy, we would continue. I mean, that was kind of my understanding. How about you, Stephen?
Yeah, no, I think you're, I think you're right on, on target, Doug. And Freddie, my understanding is that December is determining the right trees, so she's, she's marking the trees, so trees, so he, he cannot go in there and pick out the best and leave us with the leftovers, because she's marking those trees up front. And you do make a point that, which is valid, I, I think that he could come in and determine, do, do a section of it and walk away and say, "You know what? This isn't what I signed up for, I don't want to do it again." And, and I'm, frankly, I'm okay with that. I mean, like, you know, that's, that's part of the deal. At any point in time, we can say, "No, that's enough," at any point in time, he can say, "No, that's enough." But at least, even if he does just a small portion of it, we're gonna have to pay somebody to do that. And so at least he's done something to save the town money by doing that small portion of it. So long as December and Andy are comfortable on the management side of determining that the right trees are being removed and, and the ones that we want left are being maintained, and so far, the feedback I've heard from Andy is that he is comfortable that they're gonna be able to manage that, I think it's a win-win for both sides. And I, I understand what you're saying, that we have been in court with this in the past, this has been, and so I appreciate the point you're making, but I think we've got the basis covered, and I think it's a win for him, and I think it's a win for us. It's another, it's another small way that we're able to make progress with the limited resources that we have.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Freddie just raised earlier a point, and this probably should have been discussed at our last meeting, and Keith, I need to involve you in this for a second. Do we have any liability out there with, they've got equipment and men out there that we need to have them hold harmless agreement or anything like that that needs to be brought forward?
I mean, absolutely, we would, I would have to counsel you by saying, yes, you should have hold harmless agreements, you should have insurance, and then it's up to the Council to determine the risk. As for liability, you do have insurance coverage, and you do have your sovereign immunity and caps on liability. But in the past, you've always required insurance, and you've always required hold harmless for all volunteer activities, so it's up to you.
Something to look at.
Yeah, I think, I think that's relevant. I think that's relevant, based on what I'm hearing.
Well, just one thing closing. I want to ask Keith a question. Your attorney, Keith, what do you think we should do? Your attorney, Keith, what do you think we should do? Do we need a contractor protector?
Do we need a contractor to put a... Do we need a contractor with this guy? Can we just make him put up insurance or whatever?
This guy who's pulling out the trees, I would have a contract with him. I mean, I personally, even if it's a short contract, I'd have a contract specifying what you all, you know, are expecting because every time I come to a meeting, people are saying a little bit different things, you know? Tonight, what was said is, "Okay, you can take some of the good trees, but not all the good trees."
Well, no, no. What we said was that December was going to mark the trees and the ones that December marks, we keep and he cannot take any of those. Zero, none.
Is that way or the other way around?
That's what I, I thought it was the other way around.
She's marking the good trees. She's marking the good trees. That's the way I understand it.
December, you're marking the trees that are staying or you're marking the trees he can take?
She's marking the good trees.
The trees that are staying.
All the trees that she's, she's marking are the trees that are staying. He cannot touch any of those trees. And the other trees are free game. Right. That's the way it's always been. And he's going to do section at a time for as long as he wants to, you know, as long as it works for both parties.
So we can terminate it anytime?
We can terminate it anytime and he can terminate it anytime.
I would have a key page agreement saying that.
I think, I got no problem with that.
Mayor, if I can jump in just a moment. Following the last meeting, December and I did kind of come up with some kind of terms and conditions under which we, some ground rules under which we would operate in this case. Following, I hear the concern of council. I think I captured certainly what's been discussed here and what your concerns and intent are. What I will do is I will take that information that December and I developed, I will share it with Keith and we'll formalize that in a, I'll say, I'll use formalized, but really an informal agreement so that we're real clear on what the understanding is from both sides. We'll get him to sign off on that. We do have his insurance record, information on file and I think we're, I think we're in good shape, but I understand the concerns of council. And if we can formalize that a little bit more so that we have an agreement, I think that will give you a greater degree of comfort.
Good.
Yeah, I'll say this, I was there when they pulled up. There are no nickel dime outfit. But I just can't believe that we could go in there and tell somebody, "Go in our park, take what you want," you know, and...
Well, that's not what we did. We didn't do that. We told them what they can take and what they can't take.
Right. But then we didn't tell him what he had to do when he, he told us what he's going to do. But then when he gets through and he, and he says, "I didn't say that," then what do we do?
Yeah, no, our contract's a good idea.
Yeah. Some kind of member understanding. Yeah, agree. Yeah, okay, agree. Any, Gary, you want to, any comments, council member comments?
I'm through.
Yeah, Freddie's finished.
Okay. Just briefly, there's, Rolling Oaks Civic Association's going to have Halloween in the Rolling Oaks Park on the 31st from 6:00 to 9:00 and I invite everybody to come out. It's a big event. We had several hundred children last year and a couple of big kids that sit up here last year. Everybody had a lot of fun. And the Parks Foundation is having, the Astronaut Parks Foundation is having a big fundraiser on the 16th at the, of November. As just a reminder, I want to keep saying it over and over, to support, it's their big fundraiser, their big dollar drive for the year and I encourage everybody to go. It's going to be a barbecue and a hoedown, you know, I'll order pizza. The Old Davie Schoolhouse, the 16th. The, we actually had a mini historic moment tonight. I don't think, I think everybody missed it. Noel Hollingsworth admitted to using the internet. I just want to mention that. Next thing you know, he's going to actually slip with an email address.
He didn't say if it was his or someone else's though.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out. The other thing is Andy sent us some information today on Adopt a Street. I have a question for Andy regarding that. The costs seem to be within line that we can, something we can continue with that was discontinued. Does our current holler have anything like that or is this a county-only function?
That's a program through Barrett County.
Okay, but they don't have anything similar?
No, no, no. Sun Bergeron doesn't offer an Adopt a Street program, no sir.
That was a really good question I had. Okay, that's all I have.
Thanks, Gary. Steve?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First of all, I'd just like to say for these folks in the first row, and I apologize, I'm terrible with names and I messed it up again, but I really appreciate what you all said. Welcome, great to have you here and just, man, this is, you know, what Southwest Ranches is all about and just fantastic. I wanted to, I wanted to publicly thank Marty for, first of all, the great budget job that was done this year, just really excellent. I know Marty and Peter, his assistants, just a really excellent job. And just to put an exclamation point on that, I remember probably about eight or nine years ago, when I was sitting out there as opposed to up here, I remember the budgets we saw and the things we saw and all that. But one of the things that I started to ask for at that time was a month-to-date, year-to-date, budget-to-date and expense and used-to-date figures so that it was, you could see, this is what we anticipated by this time of year and this is what actually occurred at this time of year. So it gives you a much better picture at where we truly are versus what we expected. And I've been waiting as a resident and now on the council for seven years to see that report and Marty delivered that report this past week. And I would just like to thank him for that. It's a great tool to really be able to see what's going on in the finances of the town and it's just, it's a tremendous tool to be able to have. And I appreciate all the effort that went into it and thank you for coming through with that, Marty. And I guess the last thing, Andy, I just wanted to put on your, if you could address it in your, in your comments, if you can give us kind of an overview, I know we're starting in on the timeline, on the restrooms for the fishing hole park. I don't have a good sense in my mind of when these things are coming online, when the park's going to open, those kinds of things. If you can give us an overview of your best view on how that's coming along and really a timeline of when these things are going to come online, when we can really start to use the park, I'd like to, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Doug?
Yeah, a couple of things, mainly one that I think you all have a little bit of a heads-up about. The only two things we have on are active hit lists are illegal fill and illegal dumping. I would like to add one more to that. And mine would be the overgrown lots that are getting out of control throughout town. And I'm not talking a foot or 18 inches, I'm talking three, four and five feet where they're getting so out of control that now you need to get a clearing, you know, they're turning into trees now. And when they used to maintain them, they're not being maintained anymore, they're really... I'll give you a perfect example, where they used to keep the horses over here and the cows between us and Flamingo Road, right on the right, there's 30 acres there. And 10 of it was left, was sold off a while ago. The Hindu Temple bought it, thought they were going to expand the school. We changed the zoning many years ago, they weren't able to. And it got all overgrown and it was a clear field at one time. But the other 20 acres, now that they don't keep horses and because of violations and stuff and then getting out, not putting up a decent fence, now they're items five and six feet tall in there. So, and then throughout town, the vacant lots next to people are overgrowing and all the trees, whether they're pine trees, holly, whatever, are hanging over in the, to neighbors' yards. And the code says that there needs to be a 20-foot clear zone on the perimeter. So you don't have to go in and say somebody, "You've got to clear your whole lot," you know what I mean? You don't have to clear it to maintain it. But if it's overgrown and it's inside that 20-foot area related to a neighbor's property, because if somebody takes care of their property and they have all these other persons' branches hanging over it, it's really annoying, breaks their fences, you know, the whole deal. So I would like us to consider putting that item, when it's out of control, you know, on the hit list kind of thing because it's just getting worse and worse and worse. I don't know if you guys realize that.
Yeah, no, I would support that.
So anyhow, so that's, obviously I'd like to see the policy because I don't want to go after or attack people because, but within reason, you know, they need to keep it cut. That's all I'm saying. And I think code enforcement needs to send them a notice. You know, I don't want to just go find them, I'd like to give them a warning notice that you need to maintain it and then at which time, then follow it that way. So anyhow, that's just something I think we need to do that'll make a lot of residents happy. I've got to tell you, I've had at least 10 phone calls from residents related to a neighboring property or a property they drive by. And for that matter, it could be our own right-of-way, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay. I got a consensus, Andy, on that.
I think you have, I don't think there's anybody who would...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I know, Steve, you had another, you had another, thank you, Doug, you had another issue that you wanted to bring up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I meant to bring this up and missed it. I did want to remind residents out west that we are going to have a traffic workshop dealing specifically with the area 185th, 186th, 188th and 190th coming up on October 3rd. And just want to make sure all the residents that are in that area, I'm sure will, the topic of 184th will also come up too. So if that's, if that's something that you're concerned about, also please come out to that. The purpose of that meeting, that workshop, is to be able to garner some ideas, some new ways to make progress. I think in the past, we've, we've tried to do the big solution and we've worked hard at doing the big solution, but to be honest with you, we haven't made progress. So I think a different strategy this time is to start putting some small pieces together, start providing some relief and be able to make some progress. So if that's an area of town that you're in or you're concerned about, then I would encourage you to come out to that workshop. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. You're welcome. Just real quickly, while it is an agenda item, well, not this particular issue, but 11th, we've gone through about 11 different contract extensions with BSO. But just to update you real quickly, we're working hard. We've met twice with BSO, Keith, I and Andy. And if you'd like to add additional information, I encourage you to do that. Again, we'll be meeting with BSO next week for the third time and I suspect that we'll have a concrete proposal to bring to you all in addition to continuing discussion and negotiations with the town of Davie. We'll be meeting with them also again next week. I know that Andy has had some preliminary discussions with them, Keith is as well. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I would say, worst-case scenario, couple of weeks, that we'll have some proposals for you to contemplate with regards to our police services heading into the, into the future. So with that being said, I don't have any thing else. That concludes council member comments. Item number six, legal comments. Keith?
Sure, Mayor. I'll be quick. I just want to expand a second about what you said about the contract with BSO and looking at options at Davie. The mayor, Andy sent everyone a wonderful email that really gave a good synopsis of where we're at with BSO, but obviously probably the public hasn't seen it. So I'll just briefly summarize it. And that is, BSO believes it's necessary to add an additional deputy to our staffing, okay? They believe by having an additional deputy, they'll be able to more sufficiently cover the whole town area. As a result of that, the contract price would have to increase by approximately $145,000 to add in the additional deputy because they make that much money. That was a joke. So as a result of that, we asked BSO to also look at our contract price because the way that the contracts work is it's a snapshot in time of the exact staff that you have employed by your municipality as of May 1st of that year. And the problem with our municipality, on May 1st, we had almost a completely different BSO staff than what's here today. And as a result of that, we've asked them to now look at the dollar figures of what our current staff is making, not what the staff was back in May. And I spoke to Jeff Hessler today and they're working on looking at it and trying to get the new numbers. Andy has done a very good job of working with Davie on a similar track to find out what they'd have to offer. At this point, we know roughly that the town, to stay with BSO, is at a minimum going to have to spend about 2.3 to 2.35 million, which is an increase from what's there today and an increase of what's in the budget. So what eventually, we're going to come back to you at, is the base contract that BSO is going to offer, which is our current contract plus a deputy, that is the minimum amount that they're going to offer. And then you'll be able to compare that against what Davie would offer for the same dollar amount and for less dollar amount. So you could make a apples-to-apples comparison and looking at the pros and cons and determining how you want to go at that point. We're not there yet at Davie, we're not there yet at BSO, which is why there's an item on your agenda to extend it for 60 days while we're trying to figure it out. In other legal news, I mentioned, I think last meeting, that we had three lawsuits against us by New Testament Church as relates to the ordinance that gave more open space. The most, I mentioned, the first one was originally dismissed by the court, the Department of DOA, which is a, it's the state department when they review comprehensive plan challenges. I forgot what they call themselves now. But they, that complaint was just dismissed by DOA, so now we're left with one case by New Testament Church. And hopefully we can get that one resolved soon as well. October's going to be a very busy month as relates to CCA pine litigation because the mayor and I are scheduled for deposition. And when we asked them to be deposed as well, they said, "Sorry, we're not going to be deposed, legislative privilege." So we're still a little bit confused on that one, but we'll keep you updated.
Interesting. That's true. You know, we can ask questions and depose you, but you can't ask questions and depose our elected officials. So I'm not sure how that's going to reconcile. We have a meeting, hearing coming up, I think, October the 3rd. But anyway, that concludes, a lot of interesting things going on behind the scenes. And as it evolves, we'll certainly keep you updated. That concludes item number six, legal comments. Item number seven, administration comments. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a few things for you this evening. I think you and Keith have covered the BSO-Davy police contract discussions fairly well. I don't have much to add to that, other than I will tell you that I'm happy with the progress we're making on both fronts and I certainly look forward to bringing you all a choice. You know, decisions, competition is good and I look forward to bringing you a choice on that. Following a little bit on the same note, you all know that our captain Linda Canada-Stuck has retired. She went out, she went out a little quicker than we expected, had some family health issues that she had to deal with and, you know, unfortunately she expedited her retirement. But I do want to introduce you and certainly the members of the public here to Lieutenant Ron Baranski, who's serving as the interim command staff in our, in our district. And he just kind of hit the ground running. This is his first council meeting tonight. I've assured him they're not all like this.
It's been an experience for one week, I have to tell you. It's been an experience for this last week, I have to tell you. But I was brought up in a small town. I love small towns. I am extremely happy being here, filling in for Linda. Linda's done a fabulous job here and I hope I can do as good a job, if not better, in the future. And I'm here to help the city and I'm here to help the town. So I've got a lot of experience. I've been in law enforcement for approximately 46 years right now. And I've worked with small towns, big towns, large cities, small cities, and it's good to get back to a small town. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Ron, welcome to the town. It's great to have you. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ron. We've gotten off to a very good start and certainly a very good working relationship now. Fishing Hole Park, couple of things on that. One is council member Fisick Kelly may be the hardest-working retired man I've ever seen. And I only wish, at 30 years younger, I was in half as good shape. Things are progressing. Freddie's done a great job catching some things out there, working with Willie and I. And, you know, I'm certainly pleased with where we are. There's some things that we needed to modify, we needed to fix a little bit, we've been able to do that. We've been involving one of the engineers at Winningham and Fradley, just making sure that things are completed and certainly up to snuff. And, you know, pleased with where we find ourselves in that project at the present time. Going forward on the timeline... Going forward, on the timeline Vice Mayor had asked about, at a previous meeting, it might have been just the last meeting, you approved the go-ahead, the contract on the pavilion. That's something that was the same company that did the playground equipment out there, so they've certainly got a track record with us. We know the quality of what they install, and that they do get it done, and they'll hit their deadlines, and we're certainly optimistic at this point that that pavilion could be in by the end of the calendar year, if not, very shortly after that. Once that pavilion goes in with the playground there, I think, you know, around the first of the year, we're certainly on track to have the playground open. The restroom, I think I let you know that that bid is complete. It looked like we're going to be issuing the bid for the restroom on, I believe, on Monday. That'll be going out, and I certainly look forward to getting that out. I don't recall what the timeline is on the construction of that bid, but I imagine it'll be out about 30 days. It'll take us about 30 days to process and award the contract. So I would say at this point, we're probably 60 days out. You know, if we can do it at the meeting in December, we'll do it. Otherwise, in January, we'll probably be awarding the contract for the restroom.
But we're not dependent upon that for opening?
Certainly not. Certainly not. And, you know, if we can have the playground open and kind of barricade off that to protect, we'll leave the playground open to the public while we're working on that construction. Rolling Oaks Barn, we're continuing to progress. I can tell you that staff, Emily, December, and Willie had a meeting, I think, yesterday with our architect of record. They've given me a 27-page document I haven't had a chance to review. That's on my list for tomorrow, and we'll be meeting on that, so they'll bring me up to speed on where we are with that progress. But I think we're certainly moving in the right direction, getting closer to getting that out to bid. That's one that I certainly know there's a lot of concern over, and as that comes together, that document, we'll share with council, we'll share with the Parks Board, make sure we're on track. There was a comment made earlier about the website and finding information on there, and I can tell you that the website is... There are redundancies, there are various ways to find the same information. Some are easier, some are harder. If you're looking for an agenda item, it's actually not as hard as it might sound. If you click... If you want to know what's going on in the town, there's a calendar. If you click on the calendar, that'll tell you, for example, the council meeting tonight. You click on that, the agenda, everything is attached to that. So if you just go through the calendar, you know what's going on, and you could find all the related information, and certainly find what you're looking for with hopefully less The last item I have, Erica, you've got a couple of slides I'd like to put up, because I just want to bring you up to speed and let you know the oft-discussed entranceway signs are about to happen. We've gone out to bid on that, we've gotten three bids in. The low bid, the bid that we're going with, is George Morris from PHI. That falls within my authority, so there's no council action that's necessary, but since this is such an important image piece to part of the town, I certainly want to share with that information with all of you. The location that the art board, and I just want to thank certainly two people, three people here from the art board tonight. Ken Semet is here as chair. I know Manny Hagan's on that board, and Susan Cuts has served as staff liaison, has done an outstanding job with that board. I know that this is something they've worked towards for a very long time. So the entry sign there that you can see, and I'll certainly forward this to you, is in the median, it's actually three medians west of Flamingo, the first wider median as cars come into our town, and it'll be located, you can see a little bit more on the north side for the oncoming traffic. And Erica, if you go to the next slide, it gives you a little bit better version of what that slide looks like. The flag that's in there is, it's about a three-by-five, I believe, Ken, if that sounds right, and that actually can come out, and banners promoting upcoming town events, like the upcoming craft fair, et cetera, will be able to put into those as... To help promote those upcoming events. And I'm certainly very confident that this is going to be a very smooth and easy process as we've got two residents who are involved, Ken Semet, who is the original designer of the sign, and George Morris, who's going to construct the sign, so I certainly expect, you know, smooth collaboration between the two so that we get the finished product that we're looking for.
Remember, we know where they live.
This is the first, I'll tell you, of what is proposed, is four entryway signs. Their second one, because based on funding, and as they have the opportunity to do it, the next one would be way out at the far western end of Griffin Road as traffic comes in from I-7... From 27, and then they'd like to do two more signs in the median, just east and west of 75 along Griffin Road as well. So I just wanted to share that with you, let you know we're moving forward with that, and we're very pleased, very excited about that. And Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Well done. Okay, item number eight. Erica?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the selection committee's recommendation and ranking for a fire operational study, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement with Public Safety Solutions Incorporated, an amount not to exceed $28,850 and zero cents, in substantially the same form as attached here too, as Exhibit A, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The future, certainly our volunteer department and how we contract for fire and EMS services as we currently do with Davie, has certainly been often discussed by this council, as a council, as the Board of Directors for the volunteer fire department, and certainly in the fairly recently formed Fire Advisory Board. The challenges with funding that department and having professional services and where we go, and the sustainability of that, is really a challenge that we recognize, and we recognize that we don't have the expertise to explore various options to decide on the best future for the fire and EMS protection for our residents. So what we did was, we had gone out to bid, looking for a professional firm who could come in and explore the various options, the ins and outs, the expenses, and make good, hard recommendations to us with the numbers to back it up, so that you would have that information you need in order to chart the course for fire and EMS services here in Southwest Ranches. We received five bids back. We had budgeted $40,000 for this study. We got five in. The one that we're recommending for award was actually the second lowest. We had... I had four members on the selection committee. Every single member of the selection committee had this firm ranked number one. If you look at the point totals that are in there, you can see they clearly distinguish themselves from the competition there, and, you know, we're excited to recommend you award this contract, PSSI.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Any additional questions, comments, concerns, counsel? We have a motion and second to approve. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number nine. Erica?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the 11th Amendment to the law enforcement agreement by and between the Town of Southwest Ranches and Scott Israel, Sheriff of Broward County, Florida, and authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute said amended agreement and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Erica. Keith?
Yeah, this is your 60-day extension for BSO until we can come to terms with BSO. I would ask, or Davie, sorry. I would ask the council to please pull the amended version of the resolution, and so that the general public knows there was one change in that the way that the Broward Sheriff's Office receives its funding for E-911 comes directly from the county. It's a reimbursement to them from the county, so they're requiring, which they should, all new agreements, and they're also going to do it on amended agreements, to have the language that if the county fails to pay them for E-911, the municipality has to pay them for E-911. But in this case, we know that this present year, the county is paying for it, so there was no issue putting it in the agreement, so...
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? See none. We have a motion and a second to approve. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, reestablishing the Town Council's policy relating to the mitigation of code enforcement fines and improving... Excuse me, and providing an effective date.
Mayor?
Ten.
Keith?
Ten, nine, eleven.
Oh, sorry. No. You said 11.
Yeah, it's 10.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Item number 10. Thank you, Erica.
Both Robert and I asked for this item to be on the agenda for one main reason, and that is, the properties in the ranches are turning over at a staggering rate now. I think the economy must be coming back, so all of a sudden, all of these absentee homeowners who haven't been there, your property owners, who haven't been there for three years while we've been cutting their grass and dealing with their code issues, are finally selling their properties, and they're coming in at an alarming rate and saying, you know, "I know there's $100,000 worth of liens on my property because I haven't cut the grass in four years, but I expect only to pay $1,000." And we keep telling them, you know, that's not how Southwest Ranches works. In 2000, to get around issues that a lot of municipalities had, the council then, and John Canada said, "You know what? Liens are liens on the property, and if the person comes forward and is really working with the municipality and you know you're working with them, it's one thing, but if they're not and they couldn't care less, it's another thing." So what we did in 2000 was, the council made a decision that, okay, you know, this is fully the purview of the town attorney, that's the way the charter and both the code reads, but we're going to make a recommendation to the town attorney that you only mitigate up to 30% of the lien, meaning you only give someone a 30% discount if they've shown that they've been trying to comply and really have been giving their good faith, best effort to bring a property into compliance. We've always invoked that rule for the last 13 years, but now, all of a sudden, you know, and Robert's in the back now, it's constant calls, and then constant calls to council members, constant calls to Andy, saying, "What do you mean? You're only going to discount it 30%?" You know, "Now I'm ready to sell the property," and there are banks calling, everyone calling, you know, "And you're going to blow my deal if you don't, you know, give me the property back for $1." You know, those sort of situations. So although I know it was the council's policy back in 2000, Robert and I both wanted a resolution on the books to say to people, "Listen, this is not a political issue. You should not be calling everyone in the town, all your friends, to try to force us to reduce a lien." A lien is on there, and especially in the ranches, Robert gives them so many opportunities to try to come into compliance, it's different than any other municipality I work with, that, you know, we want to take the politics out of it and basically say, "This is the decision. It's been the decision of the town since 2000. Here's the resolution, you know, this is the max we can do, and let's call it a day." So that's why it's before you for consideration, just because of the fact that even today, Robert discovered that a guy called us and said, "Would you mitigate my lien?" You know, we looked into it, I offered him the 30%, he sold the property and didn't pay us a dime and didn't tell the new purchaser that the lien was on the property. So we need something to back up this process, to say, "This is the decision of the council, and this is the max we can go."
Thank you, Keith. Counsel?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I think Gary went to the restroom, but anyway.
He's right there.
Oh, there's Gary. I'm sorry, Gary. I apologize. Wait a minute. Gary, is that... Apologize. Okay, got a motion and approve, but just confirm, and essentially, what was in existence, but now it's in a resolution form to offer 30% discount if...
Not more than.
Not more than. If they are involved in the process and make an attempt to fix whatever the issue is. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Attorney, and all the residents. My name is Joanne Hollingsworth. I live on Southwest 199th Avenue, proudly in the Town of Southwest Ranches. As far as this goes, I don't think we should be giving any discount of the 30% if they are just coming in for a discount. If it's something that will help sell the property to someone who is more responsible, that might be a consideration, but just because it is mounting up on their property that they have not cared for, I don't believe we should be giving any discount. Thank you.
Any other public comment? See no public comment on this item. Public comment is now closed.
I just want to address Joanne, just so she knows. The only reason why they come forward is because they're selling the property.
Right.
You know, if not, they leave the lien on their property, we would never know about it.
Right, right. Okay, we got a motion and second to approve. Any questions, comments, or concerns? And I see a couple hands. Steve, and then I'll get to you, Freddie.
I just wanted to make the quick comment that, you know, it's easy to forget the years of aggravation of all the neighbors that have put up with, you know, and possibly even sold their property at a lower value because of what's going on. You know, when a new owner comes in, and, "Oh, you know, really, we didn't mean it that way." And it's just easy to forget, so I appreciate that, and frankly, just to kind of add on to what Joanne is saying, that, you know, unless they really are making a sincere effort, I'm fine with leaving it the way it is, you know?
Freddie?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I've already talked to Keith in the past, and it's been a year or so, about this, and my point was legally, where do we stand? I've been in the rental business myself, and I've been hit with some fines from rental business from other towns, and we're handling it a little different than what is my experience and what has been. And I've asked Keith legally where we stood on it, and I've accepted his opinion, but I still want to express my opinion because there's a chances that some people out here could lose their property. When you get fined for not cutting the grass, and I think we've been averaging $500 for the person who got counted that past. In the past, in the towns that I've been involved in, and mainly Miami, what Miami did, they fined me for not cutting the grass, and then they fined me a percentage of that $500 every month. And I've had some fines where people just drop trash and it goes up as high as $1,000. We're doing it different. We go out and cut the grass for $500, and if the people come to our meetings and they can really resolve it, but if they don't come, nobody does anything, we start hitting them with $100, $100 a day fine. And to me, I don't know if that's legal. I'll be real truthful. I think we can... And I've talked to Keith about it, and Keith feels that we don't have the money in a town this small to pay all those $500, and that's it. But I just want to make sure that we're right. That's all. But I know I've been involved in three or four of them, and some of them are pretty legitimate, but some of them were, they didn't cut the grass, and we went out and cut the grass, but they didn't go to the meetings, but they keep cutting the grass every time after that, and they come up with $50,000. One of them was $50,000, one of them was $70,000, and I had a little trouble with that.
Thank you, Freddie. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, counsel?
I do have a...
Steve, absolutely.
Just a question, Keith. So in that situation, you were talking about where the property was sold and the lien was not enforced as part of the sale of that property.
We have it on...
Where does that leave us?
We have it on the calendar for November for foreclosure by the town. We'll own the property, and we've done that before, you know? And just to respond, for the record, for what Councilmember Fisickelli said, just to shed a little light on the conversation, in Miami, they have huge crews and tremendous capacity to bring properties into compliance. So once a property is brought into compliance, the fine stops until you recite it for repeat violation. So essentially, the city of Miami will be operating as your yard crew, and some people are, "Okay, let Miami cut my grass once a month for $500. It's easier than me hiring someone else to do it." And when I remarked that the town doesn't have the capacity to do that, the town doesn't have not only the equipment, the people, the staff, nor the budget to be property maintenance experts and going around cutting people's grass. In the town, when someone comes into compliance and they advise Robert they're in compliance, the fine stops that day. You know, the minute they're in compliance. He can then recite them if they let it go again, but no matter what, just as in Miami, just as in the town, the minute the property's in compliance, the fine stops.
You're welcome. Any other questions, comments, or concerns, counsel? All right, we have a motion and second to approve. we have a motion, a second to approve. Call the question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
No.
Councilmember McKay?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brad Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. Item number 11. Discussion item. Policy on public testimony at public meetings. Keith?
This is, the Florida legislature decided that they were going to change the Florida statute, and actually, I ignored it because we comply, but there are a lot of municipalities out there that don't let residents speak at all, not on any items, not on public comment, they don't let them speak at all. So the Florida legislature requires every municipality now, once a year, to put an item on their agenda saying, do we allow our public to speak enough? And so it's on there to comply with the requirements. You all just need to decide whether or not your public speaks enough.
Are you referring to extending the time?
That was good, Keith. That was very good.
That's very good.
I think we're okay.
I was going to say, does anybody...
I'd say we go way over.
Yeah, I would say we probably do. And we err on the... We err on the side of caution, because we value the input from our residents. And again, you know, another perfect example is tonight we violated Robert's rules because we wanted that additional information. We do it all the time, so. Any further question, comments, thoughts? Okay. Before I go to the next discussion item, I know that Andy had some information, or some comments about the new, not the new, but the E911 issue.
Yeah, Mayor, I actually meant to cover this during my administrator's comments, and I got so excited about the new sign, I overlooked it, so I apologize for that. You know, and I hope this is the last discussion we have to have on E911 service, but I will tell you, let me just, I'll back up to last month. We were one of the first municipalities to approve the interlocal agreement with Broward County for emergency 911 service. We struck one whereas clause from the agreement, which was a request that Keith had received from an attorney with the Broward League of Cities. They wanted municipalities to consider striking this clause. And I'll paraphrase that clause, but that clause basically says that both parties, which would be us in Broward County, agree that the county doesn't have the legal obligation to fund E911 service. And our feeling at the time was that if the county wanted to say that they didn't believe that they had that legal obligation, that we were okay with that, but we didn't necessarily want to agree with that. So, as I said, we were one of the first municipalities to pass it. We eliminated that whereas clause. We sent it off to the county. Update to where we find ourselves now. A letter from Broward County, which I've shared with most of you, which basically says, please be advised, the county will not accept any agreements that have been modified from the standard form. Okay? They also go further to say that will be billed for services utilized. And my concern with that is that puts us in a position where our residents would be, in fact, doubly taxed, because the county approved their final budget this week. They've added 0.17 mils to the county millage rate to offset the cost of the emergency 911 service. So, liking a good fight as much as anybody else, we look at where we find ourselves. And I can tell you that with one exception, every single other municipality has passed the county standard agreement as requested, with one exception. The other exception besides Southwest Ranches was actually Pembroke Pines. They made other changes to it, and I learned yesterday that they've worked through their difficulties. So we're kind of alone, because we passed it first, and nobody else jumped out there with us. So we have, at the present time, two choices in order to not wind up getting billed for E911 services. One option is we hold our noses and approve the agreement with that clause in there, and send that off with a letter that basically says, we're approving this under duress, that we do not agree, but we're approving the agreement in order to protect our residents in this case. Our other option would be to file a DEC action and a 164 conflict resolution, and slug it out with the county on this one. I'm happy to do that. In many cases, we, you know, Keith and I worked very closely on the resource recovery board issue. We filed the conflict resolution. The county rolled over on that. We got the extra money out from them without, really, without even the conflict resolution meeting. My feeling is, we pick our fights, and I'm not sure that this fight, this warrants that. So my recommendation to you is that we approve the agreement with that one last little addition. We let them know that we're not happy about it, and we roll forward from there.
I definitely want to speak on this. Just so that you all know, most of my fellow city attorneys were afraid to tell the council the truth on this matter, which is why so many of the councils actually adopted the agreement. What is likely going to happen at some stage, whether it's two years, three years, four years, 10 years, whatever it is, the county's going to find itself in a budget shortfall, like it does. The county's really good at spending our money. Then they're going to say, well, you know what? We're not going to fund this E911 anymore. It's too much money. So what does that mean? All of the municipalities who signed their form agreement are then going to have to pay for their E911 coverage. Why? The charter is clear. It is crystal clear. I sent it to Andy so he could see it. The Broward County Charter says the county is responsible for funding in whole E911 service. It says it directly in the charter of the county. So by them proposing this agreement and having all the municipalities over a barrel, they put in their contract with us one clause that says, by signing this agreement, you're agreeing that you could never say that we're required to fund E911 service. Okay? So every one of these municipalities, every one of them, have waived their rights for the future of their municipality as it relates to challenging the county when the county one day says, we're not going to fund it anymore. I wasn't uncomfortable putting you all in that position, so I wanted to be very upfront and tell you that the decision you make potentially could impact the municipality in the future, and you have to go into it knowing that. And that's, you know, our job, and I think Andy laid it out.
What's our other option?
We tried option A, which was approving it without that clause in it, and they rebuffed that. Option B is entry into a 164 challenge against the county, which actually, Pines is in the middle of now. It was never completed. And telling the county, we're in full agreement, but we're not, you know, going to sign this agreement, that, you know, in the future, we can't revisit this issue if you pull funding from us. I have no idea how the county would react to it. They'd have to go to the meeting. You all would be there. They would be there, and we could discuss it with them. Option three, and that would lead to a DEC action, which is, it's not even a dispute. I mean, it's crystal clear in the charter. You'd just be asking the judge, your honor, what does this clause mean, and let a judge make a decision on that. There's no discovery or anything else. It is what it is. It's a charter.
It's a determination.
It's just, what does this clause mean in the charter? And then option three is, as Andy laid it out properly, we write them a letter saying, we're signing this under duress, and we, you know, we can't believe you're doing this to us, but we're signing it anyway. I think we lose, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, fortunately, I won't be here, but I can look back and say, I told you so. So, you know, it's up to the council to make a decision. I am shocked that other councils didn't understand what they were agreeing to. I spoke to the City of Hollywood, to two commissioners there, and their manager refused to tell them. Why did their manager refuse to tell them? Because they used the money in their budget that they were saving for something else. So they didn't want to rock the boat. Margate said the exact same thing. We really didn't want to tell our councils about it, because, you know, we already applied to Margate the million dollars that we were using somewhere else, and it would have messed up our budget, you know, to tell our council. So, you know, you're one of the few councils that actually knows, and that's what it comes down to.
Sounds like a fight to me.
So, I guess my question is, if we pay this, how much are we talking about?
We have asked them what that fee for service would be. They have not responded to that question. And I'm not sure they know what that cost is yet, quite honestly.
And here's, the thing that really determines my thinking and the direction that I would go is your confirmation, Keith, that it's crystal clear in the charter that they have to fund it, you know? So I suspect that the reason that language was included as part of that agreement, they can potentially get out of it. But let me ask you a question, Keith. If it's in the charter, but yet there's a disclaimer in the agreement, what prevails? Other than you telling us, don't sign it, because it's crystal clear in the charter anyway?
You'd be contracting away your rights.
Okay, okay. Well, that answers the question.
You're waiving your rights. It's just a stray waiver.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Doug.
If there's a DEC action already taking place with Pines, and it's just sitting dormant, can we sit on the sidelines and wait and see what the outcome is?
If I may jump in, Pines completely rewrote their agreement. It wasn't just this one difference, first of all, and I learned yesterday that Pines is in a very different situation. They are one of the PSAP, the Public Safety Answering Point locations for the county, and they've actually, I spoke to Commissioner Wexler yesterday, and learned that Pines has worked through their issues as part of their PSAP agreement. So they're apparently where they need to be. So we would be the only ones, certainly, on this issue.
Sounds like David Goliath.
My question was answered. Steve, and then I'll get to you, Freddie.
I'd like to know what, how much money we're talking about. I mean, that's, to me, you know, I mean, you know, if it's...
Nice to know.
If it's $3,000, all right, you know, then, yeah, but if it's, you know...
$40,000.
Yeah, or $300,000, you know, then, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Is there any way to get, is there any way to get, find out what that number is? Well, because if it's cheap, you know, it may not be worth fighting over, but if it turns into a big number, it's worth fighting over.
They're really in the process of putting this new system in place for October 1st. I don't think, at this point, they have any idea. I can tell you, I participated in some of those discussions going back to when I started here over a year ago, and there were a lot of different discussions on funding models, because it looked at that point like the cost was going to come down to the municipalities before the county finally reversed course and stepped up and said they would pay for it at this point. The numbers to us were anywhere from 60 to, I believe, about $120,000 on those models.
Yeah. Well, on those models, we can't do this.
What's the point of no return, Andy? Well, we've got to make a decision.
Well, they've set a deadline of October 1st, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward as a discussion item tonight. And I recognize it doesn't leave us a lot of time. I recognize there are questions that we don't have answers to at present.
They're going to send you a bill, and then they could sue you, so you could do nothing.
So we do nothing, send us a bill, then we could sue them?
So if we do nothing, they send us a bill, even though they pass this thing to raise your taxes to pay for the...
Yeah, then we'll know what the cost is, right?
Yeah, exactly.
They send us a bill, and then we start litigation again.
You know, it's so easy to do the 164. If that's, I wouldn't recommend that. I would just recommend doing the 164 and telling them we're going to file a DEC action and get rid of it.
What's that going to cost us to do?
You know, there's no discovery in that, you know, so it's a very different action. It's just going to be the standard, you look at them, how are you? They look at you, how are you? And we leave, like we normally do. But, I mean, you know, I don't know. I don't know how much the county's going to fight this. Andy, maybe you know better. If the town passed the 164 and said, we want to meet, you know, with the county commission to ask them why they're forcing us to sign this agreement, we went back to the county, even Ron Gunsberger went back to the county and said, all you need to do is put in the contract, we don't believe we're financially required to provide this service. If that's how they believe it, let them put that in the agreement. Not that the municipality is waiving its rights, you know, basically into perpetuity to require the county to fund the agreement.
Especially if it's felt, listen, the most important factor to me, Keith, is the confirmation that that exists in their charter. They have to fund it. I mean, it's there. It's crystal clear. That's...
Trying to get the language, so you can hear it.
Well, so, are you looking for a motion to go after the 164?
No, Andy's looking for a motion to sign the agreement.
Yeah, well, I don't think I'm heading that way, unfortunately.
I see, I know it's a discussion item. We're not supposed to permit public comment, but I do see a couple of hands, and here we go. I'm sorry, Freddie, I apologize. I apologize. Recognize, Freddie.
My question would be, I think, unless I read it wrong, I'm being charged already. Everybody in the county is being charged. So we're talking about a figure. Marty, couldn't we figure out what we're being charged for? If we're going to be at 1.6 mils?
They're going to double dip you.
Huh?
You're going to get double dipped, because they already take it, and then they're going to send us a bill, too.
Yeah, but you're asking, I think Steve asked the question, what is it? We costing? We should be able to take that figure, and that's what we're paying.
0.17 mils times, you know, the assessed value, I guess you could certainly come up with a figure.
Yeah, I think the issue is, see, right now, it's a new, it's a new service, so they might not even know, I guess, what all the fees are for it. And even then, it's going to be baked into everything else that we pay in taxes to them. So to break it out, it's going to take somebody at Broward County to spend some time to do that. But, so I'm not surprised they don't know what the number is, but I would kind of like to have at least a order of magnitude of, you know, whether it's $3,000 or $300,000, because I don't have a clue.
Or maybe they do, and I don't want to tell you, because 60 to $120,000 is a hell of a lot more significant than 3, 4, 5, you know, $1,000. Like I said, the charter, Keith says, is clear. They have an obligation, responsibility to fund it. No ifs, ands, or buts about it. They want to obviously include that as a condition in the contract, so we contract out that right and the opportunity to hold them accountable. So, you know, from my perspective, I don't want to include that language in there, because that's why it's included in there, you know? So I don't, like, he said that, you know, there wasn't discussion, or they didn't pass along that information. I don't know. You know, I don't have any idea. What I do know is that the facts are the facts, and here we are, and, you know, we've got to make a choice and a decision. So I don't have any problems eliminating that language and hold them accountable to what the charter specifically says regarding E911 funding. So, how you all feel about that? I see Freddie shaking your head, and Gary shaking his head, and Steve?
I want to hear the public.
Oh, okay. And Doug? And that's okay.
I want to hear the public.
Yeah, come on.
It's their money.
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. If it was like a couple of thousand dollars, that's one thing, but Andy said one of the models was...
60 to 120,000.
That's big bucks in our town. I mean, major big bucks. I mean, if you're like Hollywood or Fort Lauderdale or somewhere like that, you know, 60 to $120,000, that's chump change to them. In our town, it's big bucks, you know? I also don't like giving up my rights, and that is what this, we would be doing by contract. We would be nullifying a part of the county charter, which says that they have to pay for E911. So I say, let the judge figure it out. Let's go that way. You know, if we win, then everyone in the county's going to win. If we lose, we're going to be just in the same boat as everyone else. So I don't see it as a lose-lose situation. I see it as, we have an opportunity, let's go for it. Let's do the conflict resolution and whatever else we have to do. I do not want to give away our rights by contract that we already have. Thank you.
Thanks, Noel. Now, if we win, shame on them, the others that signed the contract that have to pay if they ever opt out. So, go ahead, Deb.
I just have just something to think of, just a question to think about on, you know, Steve Bright, Brad Cruz's question, is just looking at, trying to find out what is that number, and then also looking at what is it going to cost in legal expense to go ahead and fight this, even though things are crystal clear. We know how things that are crystal clear, how much that can end up costing in legal expense. So just to kind of take into, everything into consideration and say, is it worth, is it worth fighting for? I agree, you don't want to give up your rights, but sometimes, if you take it all into consideration, if you're looking at it financially, it's not necessarily worth that fight. So if you just kind of look at everything before and kind of, you know, don't cut off your nose to spite your face.
Okay.
Hi, Joanne Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. If you want to know about not giving up rights, you talk to Gay Chapels. She doesn't give up rights for anything. We don't give up our rights. The one, the fee we're being charged already, I have a question. If we don't sign this, do we not get the 911 service if we're already being taxed for it?
Supposedly, we get it, and the bill is for it also.
And the bill is for, okay. I think we should go and have this checked out. We should not give up our rights. Let's go ahead and have someone else take a look at it. Push the charter. I thought we voted for the charter. For any changes that would have to be made, we'd have to have an election to change them. If it's in the charter, make them honor the charter. I don't believe that it will be a $3,000 additional fee. I think when they need the money, they're going to decide, well, you know what? We want $1 million now.
I don't believe it.
We want $2 million. They're not going to turn around and look for the best amount when they're already charging us one tax, and this is an additional one. No, we have to go into some kind of litigation. Thank you. Thank you.
Ah, yeah, I don't give up any of my rights. And I have all the faith in the world in whatever our lawyer says. When I'm paying all these taxes, and the county has it in black and white that I'm gonna get this service, and then they want me to sign something that, well, like, if, you know, we decide we wanna charge you an extra 500, it's cool, because you just gave away your right. I don't give away my rights. And I think that this council needs to look at it and say, you know what? We're not gonna do it. Period. Take us to court. We're paying for the service, we should get the service. If they don't wanna do it this way, they wanna play another game, change your charter. Put it out for the public. Never know. The public sometimes doesn't have a clue, and they could get hoodwinked.
Thanks, good.
Mayor? If I could just, before Ms. Schroeder speaks...
Sure.
We just, we just crunched a little math. The .17 that, that the county will be charging as part of their millage rate, based on our total real estate value here, here in Southwest Ranches, is about $170,000.
Ooh.
That we're paying anyway.
Dee Schroeder, Thoroughbred Lane. Go for the juggler, Keith. Go for the juggler. As far as the expense for the attorney's fees, correct me if I'm wrong, this could be done as, what did they say that was, George?
Pro bono.
On a contingency?
Pro bono.
Pro bono, is that what I heard?
Our attorney is under retainer, is he not?
On a condition of a win.
Listen, the rate, the rate's good enough the way it is, believe me on that.
I think we've got a ventriloquist in the room.
His law firm's not happy with the rate we have.
Well, one thing that, that I wanna make sure everyone knows what we're talking about, and then I didn't want it coming from me, so I handed the mayor the charter, so he can read it aloud. I don't wanna spin it, I want you, everyone to hear what the charter says in section 5.03A.
I'll read it, after you get finished, Dee.
That's it. I just wanted to know if, you know, he was under retainer, or was there going to be additional expenses, you know, added in, court times, whatever? But, that's, that's just not chicken feed. I'll put it like that. That's on chicken feed. That's a lot of chicken feed. So, I say go after them and challenge it.
Okay. Here's, here's what the charter says. It's section 5.03A. It says, "The county commission, with cooperation from municipalities, shall establish a countywide communications infrastructure for fire and emergency medical services. The county shall provide," and let me read this twice. "The county shall provide funding for the communications infrastructure, and all service providers will utilize the elements of the communications infrastructure." So, that's what it says. They'll provide the funding. "Communications infrastructure shall facilitate closest unit response for life-threatening emergencies and support for regional specialty teams." It says right there, "The county shall provide funding."
That's 170,000.
170. 170. That .17 that the county, uh...
Already gonna pay it.
Passed as part of your, yes, next year you'll see that. Bob?
What am I missing? I mean, if it's in the charter...
Mike, you have a big voice, but...
Sorry.
He's still gonna speak into it.
Keith, if it's in the charter, why is it that nobody's going after the county? Why isn't there a major lawsuit being put on by all the municipalities to stop them? It seems everybody but us is rolling over. Why?
Because most of the municipalities who had stakes are saving a ton of money by the county taking it on today, because they were PSAP cities in other cities, you know, like Pines, that now they're allocating the funds somewhere else. They're not looking for the future, they're looking to today.
They have no fight. This is a savings for them.
It's a huge savings for them. Huge. You know, a city like Margate, who has no tax base, saved a million dollars, you know, which they moved somewhere else as a result of just blindly agreeing to the agreement. What I don't understand is, in, in, in reading this, I, I just don't, is how that county, how the county attorney is reading that language differently, you know, than, than what it says. It says they will provide funding. And so, you know, listen, I...
Sounds like he's inviting...
It's a no-win situation, no matter what. It really is. And I'm sorry we're the only ones involved, but I'll tell you what, the minute we were, are to do something, all the other cities are gonna be like, "Why did we sign the agreement?" You know? Because they all have no idea that that language was in the agreement. It was kept totally in the dark, on purpose.
All right.
Any other public comment? Okay. Steve?
Question. Hey, so Keith, so if we, if we do this DEC action, we miss our October 1st deadline. We potentially open ourselves up to being double-charged this first year. If the DEC action does not go our way...
Then you sign the agreement.
Then, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So, then, then we sign the agreement, but we would still probably pay for this year, and then, and then, I mean, is, is that option still available to us?
Yeah, I, I mean, first of all, you all don't have to decide tonight to file a DEC action. I'm certainly not making that decision, you know, with you all tonight.
Sounds like you better get...
What I would suggest...
Sound better sooner than later.
What I suggest tonight, and, and Andy and I discussed, if you decide, again, Andy's doing the prudent town administrator situation is, you know, there's power in numbers, let's just sign, and, you know, let it be someone else's fight another day. That's a proper advice, you know? But I just know Southwest Ranches that we generally don't follow the pack. We generally are the leaders of the pack. And, and the difference is, is that, you know, you can go and have conflict resolution and sit with the mayor and the county commissioners of the county, which is gonna come, and say, "What are you guys thinking? You know, why is this, why are you forcing our hand on this issue?" And then make a decision at that point, you know, what you wanna do. And so, you know, it's not a year, you know, decision. Under 164, they have to meet within a very short, finite timeframe, and, you know, you're talking 90 days out, really, to make a decision. But that's all I'm suggesting that you may wanna consider. Not a DEC action tonight. Just, you know, meet face-to-face with the county commission and say, "This is what your charter says. Why are you forcing all the municipalities to waive their rights?" And see what they say. That's right.
So, so what I'm hearing you say, then, is that the other, other municipalities are saying, "Hey, this is a windfall for us, worst case, we've gotta go back to where we were before."
That's right.
You know, whereas, that's not our case for us.
And other cities still have no idea. The Hollywood commissioners had no idea. Their, their city attorney and their administrator blatantly refused to tell them what was in that agreement.
So, were you unanimous?
I personally don't have a problem filing the DEC action.
Okay. I think it's unanimous to exclude that language and...
Then, what, what I would do, if you go that direction, is actually draft it a 164 until it was nixed by someone at the far end. And so, you know, so that we can commence this and get it done with quickly. I mean, we could, you know, if the county commission is amenable, we can do this in 30 days. Is have Erica read it in the record, have public comment on it, and, and move it as an add-on item to the agenda, and, and let's just get it done and move on.
Let's go.
Everybody on board with that?
I'm good.
Okay, you got it. All right, item number 12, right? Yeah, item number, is that where we are? Item number 12? Do we do, yes, we did. Item number 12. Surplus volunteer fire department vehicle.
Yep, that's where we're at.
Are we reading it in?
Lee, I see you.
He can add it afterward, doesn't matter. He can do it.
Wait, don't we need, did we just say that...
Yeah, he can add it after the end, it doesn't matter. Yeah, wherever you want.
Good evening, everybody. Andy, have you already briefed them on what's going on a little bit? Uh, let me reiterate it anyway. Yeah, we have three pieces of fire apparatus that we want to sell and reduce it to one fire apparatus. Currently, we have a, an attack truck that's a 2003...
Yeah, we are.
...that we use every time that our engine is down, and that's what we respond in. However, we also use that because of the terrain throughout the ranches to get deep into a, an area where a fire truck normally couldn't get to. So, we have that one apparatus, which is 2003. Then we have a 2002 brush truck that we found, I found out a couple months ago, that it's overrated, the GVW, gross vehicle weight. So, I had to take that out of service. Then the third piece of apparatus is the rescue truck that we acquired from Davie. So, what I'd like to do is sell all three of those, and like I say, reduce it just to one fire apparatus, would, would be a combination pumper, kinda like a brush truck, attack truck. Not only do we need a brush truck within our town, but our neighboring cities call us out quite a bit on mutual aid to give them a hand, because I think there's, really, I think, I think 55, BSO has one, that's it. And I, I don't know that it's even manned at all times. So, my recommend, you know, I'd just like to bring it up to you guys and see what you thought.
Mayor?
Thank you, Lee.
If I may add one more thing. The chief and I have talked about this, and we're pretty clear. You know, my recommendation to you would be that we would delay the purchase of any new equipment with the proceeds until we have the results back from the study, and you have some clarity and, and sense of direction where we're going with, with the department. But by going ahead and liquidating those assets now, it would put us in good position to move quickly at that time.
I got, I got one question that I have. Bob, if we do that, you're without a brush truck during that period.
That's correct. We're, we're without a brush truck right now because...
Oh, you are? Because it's overweight?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm making, do we need a motion?
Yeah, we're gonna do, we gotta do this one, and we gotta do the previous one as well.
Yeah, I'm making a motion for...
I'll second.
Okay, motion and...
Based on that the, we hold on to the proceeds till the study comes in, and we have a direction and idea where we're going.
That's true.
Making the motion, okay, is you okay to add that, Freddie? Okay. Any members of the public wish to comment on this? Lee?
Noel Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. One of the primary obligations of the volunteer fire department over the last 50 years of its existence in various different forms and has been fighting of brush fires. I know that when I first moved out here, my barn was saved because they took their brush truck where a fire truck would not go. Drove it right into the muck, put themselves right up to the windshield with the, with the muck, and under like Freddie's barn, they, they were able to save mine. But it took two Mack tow trucks from the truck stop to haul it out of there. Now, it was many, many years ago. I've always been cheerleader for the volunteer fire department since then. But not having a brush truck available in this town is neglect, I think, at the least, and at the most, criminal. So, if you're going to get rid of the three, you better have one that shows up the very next day. Not put the money in storage and have no brush truck whatsoever. One of their primary responsibilities is brush fires, as, as it is right now. And until you change it, the rules, that is their main thing. Not being secondary to Davie, they are primary to brush fires and secondary to Davie. So, if you're going to get rid of the three pieces of apparatus, and I know nothing about their status, then you get another brush truck in here the very next day. And that is my opinion. Otherwise, it is a injustice at the least, and criminal at the best. Thank you.
And with that said, what we'd have to do is sell that rescue truck, the brush truck, and keep the attack truck until such a time that we could, that we have another apparatus in place to replace that. So, you know, like I say, right now, our engine 82's been out of service for about two weeks, and the only apparatus we have to respond in is the attack truck, and we're using it as the brush and as the engine.
Mayor, let me ask Bob one question. Bob, how much weight we have to shed to get that truck within the limits?
About 3,600 pounds. And I've taken it to three companies in Miami, and they told me they can't do it. I took it to Southeast Truck, which is the king of trucks in Pompano. And after they studied it, and I gave them all the specs on it, they said it would not be worth it. They wouldn't even tackle that job. And there's not much that they won't tackle, if anybody's familiar with Southeast Trucks, the specialist in Broward County.
What I was looking at, Bob, is possibly we could get rid of two of the trucks and modify that thing temporarily till we can get this, 'cause I don't think this study's gonna take that long, is it, Andy?
We, we expect about 90 days.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, I'm trying to see way we can, you know, sell the two outright, there's no problem there, but in order be without a brush truck, is there any way we could strip something? I know what it carries, 500 gallons. How much does it carry? Water?
Carries about 275 gallons of water.
Yeah. I, I know it's a problem, but it's, it's probably is a way. I'm just trying to figure a way we could save the brush truck until, for those 30 days or 60 days or whatever.
Yeah, I, I tried to work with Southeast Truck and the others, same thing, just to get it down to where we need it. But when it really comes down to it, we have to strip it and go back to a, just a regular chassis truck.
So, you can't use it now, Chief? You can, or you cannot?
That's correct. It's been out of service for a couple months now.
And we're not allowed to use it?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, really, the only thing we have right now in service is the attack truck until we get our engine back, which hopefully we get it back by tomorrow or early next week.
So, my question to you, Chief, is, is that, making a recommendation to surplus this, these vehicles. With regards to this, this brush truck, what would your recommendation be, or what's your thought process moving forward, depending upon what you generate as, as a result of, you know, the surplus of these vehicles, the selling of these vehicles? What was your thought process with regards to that, I don't know how much you're going to generate in, in revenue, but what's your thought process as to what you were gonna do with that money, and how you were gonna address your brush truck issue?
Well, what we would do is get a combination truck. Take the proceeds from those three apparatus sales, and then just buy one combination vehicle to replace the brush and somewhat of a combination apparatus.
What would that cost? What would that be?
We've looked into it, and it's anywhere from 100 to 150,000. And we're, we temporarily talked to a few different people with the, the sale of this apparatus, and they can't take this to, for real, because we don't know what it's gonna sell for. But we're looking at anywhere from 90 to about 135,000 on, on a sale of all three. That's speculative.
So, you're right, right there.
Yeah, we're right there.
Potentially, you could have an equal exchange with what you generate in the sales and what that brush truck would cost.
That's correct.
That sounds, I don't have a problem with that. You know? Steve?
Yeah, I, you know, we historically, I mean, we're a rural town, right? So, we've always had, not always, but for a long, long time, we've had the brush truck to be able to service our town. And, you know, it's been a key to being able to provide service, you know, fire service to our town. I can't think of a scenario because no one else has a brush truck around here. You know, we're called out to other towns to help them out. So, I can't think of a scenario where we would not need the brush truck. I mean, somebody explained to me how this report's gonna come back and tell us we don't need a brush truck. We've got these large properties that we can't do a fire suppression on without the brush truck. So, I'm missing why we are delaying this process to get the study back. We're talking about the safety of our animals. We're talking about the safety of our, you know, the property and potentially people as well. I...to me, I just don't...I don't see why we're delaying. I mean, this is who we are. This is the equipment we need. It doesn't matter. I can't think of a scenario that that's gonna come back with that's gonna say, oh, we don't need a brush truck. So, I don't know. I think if we can generate the money to do it, we need to do it.
I agree. And we still have four years left on the contract that we have to provide a service. So, we've still got the four years of contract service.
Listen, you overlap. With regards to what you anticipated, you would generate as a result of the sale of that surplus equipment and what that vehicle would cost. And I'm sure that there would be some communication with Andy before doing anything, you know, see where we are in the context of things after the sale. And I agree with Steve. I mean, this is kind of a unique and a unique vehicle that there aren't any others in this county, you know? And not only do we need it here, but we need it elsewhere. But I'm in agreement with you as well. What do you all feel? Because I was gonna say something, but before I do say anything, I wanna get the feedback from either the maker of the motion and the second or Gary.
Yeah, I just have a question. Steve, when you were talking about a delay, you were saying, were you specifying that we wouldn't purchase anything until the study came through first?
What I'm saying is if they can generate the funds to purchase that vehicle, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next ninety days. And we say ninety days and ninety days can turn into longer than. You know, there could be a barn fire between now and then. So, I would say...
You're saying sell the equipment...
And if you have enough money, buy the new one then. You don't buy it.
Purchase it to a new one regardless of the study.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, that's my thought. Because I can't think of a scenario where we would say, oh, we don't need a brush truck.
And we currently have no brush truck right now.
We have nothing, yeah.
Well, that's not exactly true. We have one, but it doesn't meet...how many years have we used that truck that we're using now that we just learned recently it's overweight?
Eleven years.
Okay. So, we're a volunteer fire department.
But we can't use it anymore, Doug.
Well...
I mean, it doesn't...I mean, yeah, we were fortunate.
We've used it for eleven years. We learned this new piece of information and we've never had an issue.
And we can't use it anymore. That's the reality we're in today.
Yeah, once it was brought to my attention, I had to take it out of service.
No, no, I understand what the scenario we're in, but I'm just...it took eleven years to learn that? I mean, I don't know how that came up, but I'm, you know, I'm a little dumbfounded. It took eleven years to get that information. Not that we were even looking for it. Somebody out of the blue said, oh, by the way, you're not at capacity. And you went and got it checked and sure enough, we weren't.
Well, I can tell you how this surfaced. One of our newer personnel from out of state that's a certified firefighter came, joined our unit. His family is in the car business. And he walked up to myself and the assistant chief and says, hey, that vehicle's overweight for the GVW. I thought he was out of his mind. I took it to Weekly, we had it weighed there. Then, I took it to First Vehicle, had them weigh it by each wheel. And we are overweight. Even Southeast Truck, like, doesn't sag, doesn't do anything. They were shocked. Everybody's been shocked looking at it. Rides great, stops.
Andy, my point is it's worked all these years and why we can't use it for three months till we get to that point, I understand because you're notified and there's regulations and everything else. But I guess on the flip side, I would say, you know, I would probably be in support of letting you replace it, provided you have the money from the equipment we sold. I don't know that I'm gonna agree to spend more money than what you get to get what you need. So, that's kind of where I'm at. So, if you have the money from the sale of those vehicles and you can buy a new brush truck that's gonna replace what we need, then I would probably be okay. But if it's...
Yeah, but do we...we don't have a brush truck now.
Correct.
We obviously need a brush truck due to our unique lifestyles that we have down here. Should we really predicate that on when he's gonna sell those three? When we're gonna surplus those three? If we need it, we need it now. It's not a, we're gonna need it in ninety days from now. It's not, we're gonna need it next week. We don't know when the next need's gonna be and...
I'd like to see where the differential is, you know.
Oh, I'd love to see that.
Yeah. Because if we get twenty thousand and it's, you know, two-hundred...
Right.
That's...
We have a meeting every two weeks. We can put it back on the agenda anytime we need to.
Yeah, absolutely.
How quickly do you think you can sell those trucks?
I'm not sure on that. We have called...contacted Brenley Mountain, which is a strictly a fire...they sell all fire equipment. And we've even asked them if we could do a trade-in deal with them, you know, that even swaps. So, we're working on that at this time. But I will see what the timeframes are on this stuff now that, you know, once I see what goes on here tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to see what you can do in the next two weeks and have this on the agenda the next time we get together and see where we're at, maybe.
I don't know, probably that. So, maker of the motion, that was you, Freddie. Do you have any objections?
No, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. And the secondor? So, what do you want the new motion to say? I think I have a pretty good idea. How would you like this?
Well, I'm not sure I wanna do...what I really wanna do is just give you two weeks to see what you can do on it and report back and then do a motion there is really what I'd like to...
That's fine.
See, with the goal being that you either sell or have firm offers on the equipment.
So, if for some reason next week, Chief, consultation, communication, whatever, you know, somebody comes forward and offers you a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for that equipment and he deems it to be a fair offer, I don't wanna tie his hands, you know, if that opportunity presented itself as a...you know, bring it back in two weeks. But at least put him in a position that if indeed that was a scenario, that he has the option to do that.
Yeah, so maybe the option...let me see. Maybe the motion would be something along the lines of to...I don't know if we're authorizing or...Keith, what are we doing here? Are we authorizing the sale or are we recommending the sale? What actually do we need to do?
You're actually serving us two hats. And I was looking at how it was on the agenda before, but I didn't know what you guys were gonna do. You're actually serving as the board of directors for the fire department.
True.
And who's that vehicle owned by, the one that you're talking about?
The vehicle's owned by the volunteer fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, there's three vehicles, so...
Right, I need to know what each vehicle is owned by because that determines who's surplusing that vehicle.
Okay, the rescue is owned by the town and the other two apparatuses are owned by the volunteer fire department.
Are any monies owed on any of those items?
No, they're not.
Okay. So, you would make a motion to surplus the rescue as the town council?
Okay.
Then, after this meeting, you should have a meeting of the board of directors of the volunteer fire department and make a motion to surplus the other two vehicles.
Okay.
When you say after this meeting, you mean like...I'm sorry. When you say after the meeting, you mean like a minute later?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, the motion would be to surplus and that would allow the chief to sell?
The rescue vehicle.
You're making a motion for the...as the town council to declare its rescue vehicle as surplus and to allow the volunteer fire department chief to sell it for the most money and to hold those funds. I guess the town will hold those funds until it determines what it wants to do next. Right, which we'll talk about in two weeks.
That's correct.
Right, so I'll make that motion to declare the rescue vehicle surplus.
I'll second.
And the proceeds go for a brush truck?
And the proceeds will be designated to go for a brush truck.
Earmark for a brush truck, absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any members of the public wanna comment on this item? And I know we brought it out there to you and it is a discussion item, but we do have official action from the council. Any additional feedback? Okay. Let's call a question. Erica?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Gary. I apologize.
Should we be tasking the volunteer fire department and the administrator to start investigating a whole new...the new apparatus that is required?
They're doing that already.
At the same time?
I think it's a great idea.
They're doing that already.
They could be working in parallel.
I'm just...yeah, you're right. I'm assuming that that's going on right now. I mean, I'm assuming. That just makes, you know, sense, absolutely. I'm assuming that that's going on right now.
Find us a good deal on a brush truck too.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, got a motion and a second. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, okay. Go back again with this E-911 issue. Keith, would you like to propose some language so we can take official action?
You're gonna add it?
Yeah, Mayor. While you were debating the last item, I quickly drafted a resolution on conflict resolution on the E-911 issue. I would ask that the council make a motion to add it as item fourteen to the agenda and move adjournment to fifteen, and then we can present the resolution.
I'll make a motion to move the E-911 item to item number fourteen on our agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any members of the public wish to comment on this? Again, we're just moving into fourteen before adjournment, just a procedural thing. No public comment? I know there isn't any additional questions, comments, or concerns. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Okay, that's our item fourteen. Item thirteen, approval of minutes for the September twelve, two thousand and thirteen budget hearing and the minutes for the September twelve, two thousand and thirteen regular council meeting.
You're gonna do them separate at once?
We can do them separately.
I'll make a motion to approve both.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes.
Steve's second vote.
Erica, call a question, please. I don't think there's any feedback from the public. I suspect if there was, that we would be up here. Erica, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes. Item number fourteen.
Mayor, Erica's gonna hand it out, so I'll read it in quickly. A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopted pursuant to section one sixty-four point one oh-five-two Florida statutes declaring the intent of the town council to initiate the conflict resolution procedure set forth in chapter one sixty-four Florida statutes, finding that a conflict exists with Broward County as it relates to the county's legal obligation to provide countywide funding for E-911 communications infrastructure pursuant to section five point oh-three of the Broward County Charter, authorizing the appropriate town officials to take all steps necessary to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, again, this solely...this item is not litigation. I don't want anyone to get confused. This is solely gives you the opportunity to sit down with Broward County and find out why they're requiring you to waive your rights in the current agreement.
Thank you, Keith. Counsel.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no further...see no public comment? No further public comment? Or public comment is over. Motion and second unless there's any additional questions, comments, or concerns. Call a question, please, Erica.
Councilmember Jablonsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisickelli.
Yes.
Councilmember McKay.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bray Cruz.
Yes.
Mayor Nelson.
Yes, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Mayor, we're adjourn the regular meeting, but we're immediately reconvening right now as the board of directors for the volunteer fire department.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll take a motion for adjournment for the regular meeting before we transition.
Adjournment for a regular meeting. Motion.
Motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting before we transition into putting our other hats on.
Volunteer fire department.
Volunteer fire department board.
Board of directors.
Erica, call a question, please. Call the roll? I'm sorry, call the roll. I've...no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the roll, okay. Board member Jablonsky?
Yeah, here.
Board member Fisickelli?
Here.
Board member McKay?
Here.
Board member Bray Cruz?
Here.
And Chair Nelson.
Yes, and here.
Right, so Mayor, the item before you is to surplus, to declare a surplus to vehicles. Chief, you're gonna have to say what the vehicles are. And to enable the chief to sell those vehicles and to put the funds into the town's pot to be earmarked for the purchase of brush truck vehicle.
And that would be the rescue truck and the brush truck.
Rescue was...
It wouldn't be the rescue because that's owned by the town. It would be the other.
We can't get rid of the attack truck now because otherwise we wouldn't have a...you know, when our engine goes out, we wouldn't have anything to respond in. So, we have to keep the attack truck at this time until we sell the others.
Right.
And have some type of plan. Because every time our engine goes out, it's gone out quite a bit lately, we have nothing to respond in other than the attack truck.
This is just the vehicles that are under the volunteer fire department ownership is the ones we're talking about.
Right. So, let me ask a question. So, if we surplus both of them, we don't have to sell them immediately, right? I mean, they can still use them. Or does that saying they have to be out of use and no longer?
No, that's up to your motion. It's up to you. It's a policy decision by you.
Okay, because I mean, I would like to be able to surplus them both, but still allow them to still use it until...
Well, then, don't say that.
So, all right, well, then, I'll make a motion to surplus the attack vehicle and the brush truck. Right, and but...
Use as needed.
To facilitate the sale of both vehicles, but to use the attack truck until the brush truck is under contract.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. And just a confirmation, Keith, with regards to the rescue vehicle, we already confirmed that...because things were happening so fast, we did give authorization for them to surplus that vehicle, correct?
Yes.